On our clock, Assistant Town Clerk Jenna Murphy for the roll call, please.
Counselors, Atsles.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Rap Kersetti.
Present.
Ebert.
Present.
Lebec.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Twelve years.
Thank you. In accordance to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Not hearing any, we'd also like to announce that we are all participating remotely here tonight. So, without further ado, if we could all stand and mute our microphones, and Counselor Atsles is going to lead us in the pledge. Counselor Atsles, you can unmute yourself.
I had to practice first. Just kidding. All right. I plead your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And at this moment in time, I'd like to just observe a moment of silence and continue to remember the Ukraine and all that's going on over the world, in Eastern Europe, and other parts of the world, and continue to keep peace in our thoughts and prayers. So with that moment of silence, please. Thank you. And Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment, please?
Yes, we do. It'll just be one moment while I get the first person over.
Thank you.
Mary St. George, you're up for public comment. You have three minutes. You can unmute your microphone and begin speaking. Mary, are you there? It's your turn for public comment.
I'm going, I'm Mary St. George, President of the Friends Centerville Cranberry Bog. I'd like to yield my three minutes to Matt Dupuy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. George.
Okay. Next is Scott Lee.
This is Scott Lee. I am going to cede my time over to Mr. Dupuy as well.
So, I just want to make something clear. Are you saying that you're giving him your time, so you want him to get more than three minutes?
That's correct.
Is that something that's allowable, Karen? Turning over? Can you help me with that?
I'm sorry, what?
So, people are showing.
I didn't hear anything at all.
Yeah, it's okay. So you are showing up to public comment, something I've never come across, where they're trying to give their three minutes to somebody else, so they can have a longer moment of time in their public comment.
I think that's up to you, Mr. President, whether you'd like to do that.
Okay. We'll see how many people do it, I guess.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I am having a little bit of trouble getting some of the people to come over here, so you're gonna have to bear with me a moment.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, I just want to be mindful of the fact that we have a very long agenda tonight. So, that's, that's the reason why I'm asking, to make sure that we don't have a full-on presentation. Mr. Ward, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ward, you're up for a public comment. You have three minutes.
Well, at this point in time, I would like to defer to Matt Dupuy as the main speaker, and then most of the other people who are also bog preservation speakers will follow his presentation.
Okay. This isn't really a presentation time of the meeting, it's public comment?
I think that his comment is a generally accepted one by the bog members, and I think we can really streamline it instead of going individually if he gives the overview and major statement.
Okay. Is Mr. Dupuy in the queue by any chance, Sarah, so we can just?
He is. I did send him the, the join breakout room, but he has not joined yet.
Okay.
There are other people, so I'm gonna go out if he shows up. I'll, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
President Lebec, would you like me to give him five minutes, or?
I'm actually gonna ask him how much he would like.
Okay.
Then we'll negotiate from there.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. There he is. Mr. Dupuy, welcome.
Oh, Mr. Lebec, nice to meet you, sir.
Yes, sir. How much time do you think you need? Because we have some people here that are trying to give you their three minutes so graciously. So, but at the same time, I want to be mindful of, this is kind of not necessarily our policy, but I do want to show some grace and give you the opportunity. It's not really a presentation, this is public comment time, but, so, I just want to, how much time do you think you would need, sir?
Approximately four to six minutes.
That's fine.
But, but that's a lawyer saying that, so you have to take that with a grain of salt.
Well, we'll give you six minutes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Before he starts speaking, Matt, is it possible to make sure that Sarah has invited everybody in the outside room to come into the inside room? Because it seems for us who have not been to your sessions before, it's a little confusing, and I think they'll want to hear.
They want to be in the room to hear. Is that what you're saying?
They want to be in the room to hear.
I'll entertain that, sir.
I, I don't know where Sarah is now, so.
I think she might be trying to allow the people in. Mr. Boone's here.
I just got in.
Andrisano's here. Mr. Andrisano.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are they part of your group, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Okay. Can we proceed then?
I'm ready, Mr. Lebec.
Let's go, please. Thank you.
I want to thank, thank you. I want to thank Mark Els and Karen Nobr from Charlie McLaughlin, the meeting with us last week. We've been working on this project, working on trying to save the Centerville Cranberry Bog, which is about a quarter of a mile from the end, from the beginning of Bumps River in Centerville on the right. It is a sixteen-acre cranberry bog with about four acres of upland, including a one-bedroom house and a large, gorgeous barn on the west side of the bog. The bog is roughly shaped somewhat in the, similar to Africa, and for the last sixty years or so, like, more than sixty years, I've watched people walk around the bog. I've jogged or walked around the bog myself. It's essentially been a recreation area as well as the cranberry bog. I moved into Centerville in nineteen fifty-seven, and I built a house in nineteen eighty directly at the south end of the bog, where the water from the bog flows into the Centerville River. It's like, it flows into Scudder Bay, then Bumps River, and then into Centerville River. And the bog and the surrounding property, the trees and the wildlife, checks all the boxes of all of the conservation concerns and all of the reasons why we want to preserve open space. Recreation, you, you couldn't probably have a parcel of land that gets more recreational use than this bog. People walk it with their dogs, people walk it with other animals at times, and in the winter, freezes, they ice skate. And the, I've been involved since September, and our group has been involved since August, and we learned from the hard work and knowledge of Ellen LaBerge that the town had the right of first refusal under a little-known statute called sixty-one A, Mass. General Law, Chapter sixty-one A. And that requires the seller of the property, if they're gonna remove it from agriculture. This has been a cranberry bog since at least the nineteen fifties and probably quite a bit prior. And the owner of the bog, Mr. Jenkins, Barbara Jenkins, his wife, Mr. Jenkins, passed away. I had the obligation to notify the town that it was going to be removed from agriculture, notifying the town of its right to first refusal. And that notice was properly drafted, but it was not sent to the appropriate entities in the town. The planning board, the conservation commission, and you people, the town council, were not informed directly in the letter. And as such, it did not comply with the statute. So, through Ellen LaBerge's hard work, we researched the law, drafted a memo, and delivered it to Mr. Els. And Mr. Els was kind enough to host a meeting at the Centerville Rec Building about our concerns and our hope that we would be able to assist an entity in purchasing the property, or the town of Barnstable would purchase the property. And when the town attorneys reviewed our memo, they agreed with us. And a letter was sent to the seller indicating, would you kindly resend the right of first refusal, because what you did does not comply with the statute. And the seller demurred, decided not to, to do that, and responded indicating that they didn't have to do that under the statute. And the town attorney sent a second letter, and there still was no response. So, we've been waiting for the town to act. And again, Mr. Els and the town attorneys, I met with us last week, and they're gonna be discussing this with you people in executive session tonight. So, I want to make sure that we delivered our, our brochures and our letters and our presentations by emails to all of you counselors, as well as the hard copies. We've also been calling you. I've talked to Paula Schnep. I've talked to probably four or five or six of you, and other, other individuals that have also talked to you. So, in addition to the recreation, which I've discussed, one of the other boxes that is checked by this bog is wildlife. We have coyotes, we've got ducks. Anyone who's familiar with the property sees all kinds of wildlife there, which is one of the concerns. Because the bog flows into the Scudder Bay, and then eventually into the Centerville River, the water quality is very important in terms of removing nitrates. And if the cranberry bog is preserved, and the water quality will be even better if it's not harvested with cranberries, which is unlikely at this point. And we have the support of over three hundred and sixty people who signed our petition in favor of preserving the bog. We have fifty or sixty people who occasionally will join us at a Zoom meeting, or will have a large Zoom meeting. We have thirteen directors on our board. We have, we created a nonprofit corporation.
Mr. Dupuy, I just wanted to let you know, you've been speaking for six minutes, just so you.
Another forty-five seconds, said the lawyer. And the record, the water quality is another box that we've checked by preserving this bog. The most important person or entity that also is interested in this is the Barnstable Land Trust, and we are prepared to do anything we can to assist them. They are clearly the number one entity, other than the town of Barnstable, which takes control of these conservation property, properties. And with that, I'll end, and thank you very much for your consideration of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy, and thank you for the rest of the citizens that took place here. I know that you wanted to piggyback on, on that presentation, so I appreciate your input as well.
Okay.
And Sarah, we have, Mr. Ward, did you want to add something?
Yes, I'll be very brief. I concur with everything Mr. Dupuy has summarized and said. I'm one of the three hundred people that signed the petition. I started coming to the Cape when I was twelve years old, and every year for sixty-seven years have been down here. Bought or purchased a house thirteen years ago here, because this is where we decided we wanted to live the rest of our lives. Our children are down here, and both of them, two children, both have families, have bought houses down here. I've traveled the world, both socially and professionally, and this is where we decided we wanted to be, the Cape. The Cape is a very special and unique place. The bog and cranberries and the whole Cape environment circles around a community that can be preserved and protected through implementation of the sixty-one A statute in the common law. Sixty-one A provided for the town to purchase up land for preservation and/or assign it to a land trust. And it's a statute. We just want to have the statute followed, and we want to preserve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Okay. And so, with everyone else giving their time to Mr. Dupuy?
I'd like to speak a little bit. Attorney Andrisano.
Okay. From my understanding, I extended Mr. Dupuy's because I understood that everybody was giving their time. Is there some new information?
Well, yes. The title to the real estate at the bog is a voatable title, okay?
Okay.
It's not a good title. And, and I happen to be a real estate attorney, and I think you should at least comply with the sixty-one A and restart the notice provisions. And other than that, I concur with everybody else.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And again, I want to be gracious. But again, I asked Mr. Dupuy, we gave him extra time, so I'm not sure exactly. So, can we, can we move on to the next person in public comment?
Do you want me to run through the people and just double-check, or go to the person next on the list that does not want to speak to this item?
I'll entertain two more.
Okay. I know that Mr. Boone wanted to speak. Rob Boone?
Yeah. Rob Boone, thirty-two Rainbow Drive, Centerville. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity, and also in particular, the town attorney for, in my view, what were her two very clear and correct November twenty-twenty-one letters to the seller and buyer, emphasizing and advising them that the seller had not complied with the notice provision as required by Massachusetts law, has been referred. Secondly, and I think very importantly, Mr. Andrisano just referenced this, that the town manager's April twenty-twenty-one letter purporting to waive the town's right of first refusal, in the town attorney's words, quote, "is without any legal effect," close quote, to which I would just add that that, that must be a correct provision, because that letter can't disregard mandatory state law, even if done innocently or inadvertently. Third, Ms. Nobler's letters advise that the buyer, as Bob Andrisano definitely just said, has, quote, "defective and defeasable title," close quote. And finally, you know, requesting that the seller comply with, with the law. So I guess the three questions, points I'd just like to quickly make to, for the council's consideration. Six months have passed, and the seller still hasn't complied. So I would suggest that the council has, I think, both a legal and, and moral position to take, to act expeditiously on everyone's behalf, including the towns, to preserve the town's right of first refusal by filing a declaratory judgment lawsuit. So I guess my question to the, to the council would be, you know, what would be any hesitancy or reticence to doing that? The second thing is that if anyone were to suggest that filing might be complicated or expensive, it would seem to me that that's not the case, because the facts of the notice, or lack thereof, are not in dispute. The town attorney's already done the research, and the town attorney would be the one filing the case in a local court. And finally, my, my third point is, if anyone were to suggest, why go through the procedure to preserve the right of first refusal unless the council already knows in advance that it either, that the town will either buy the bog, or that the land trust, or the Friends Group, or some other nonprofit, or the state would buy the land if the town assigns its right? Well, the way I look at it, that's putting the cart before the horse, because as Ms. Nobler's November twenty-first letter correctly states, it's obvious that the whole point of Chapter sixty-one A is to allow the several town entities to properly consider the implications of such a sale, and whether or not, and if so, how to exercise the right of few, of right of first refusal. So it seems to me that as of now, almost a year later, none of the town's entities, including the town council, have even had these issues properly before them to consider, including whether and how to secure the requisite funds to buy the bog, and neither have the various potential nonprofit buyers, because the property's not currently for sale. Filing the lawsuit would give all concern, both the jurisdiction and the time to consider all options, including funding options, and doing nothing, by contrast, would deprive everyone of their rights and interests contemplated by the Massachusetts law. So respectfully, as the others have suggested, I would, you know, encourage the town to file the lawsuit, and thank you for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Okay. Is that it? Is there anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Take care.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lebec. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night. Take care, Ms. Boone. Sarah?
This is Lynn, and next up for public comment is Megan Moore.
Okay.
Megan, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Hello. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in my car, sorry. I just wanted to thank everyone for, you know, being able to hear me tonight, and I was gonna ask for a moment longer than three minutes, but I'll kind of try to cut it short. As many, I don't normally write things, so I'm reading, and I feel weird just not looking directly at the camera. Most of you know I'm a local Cape Codder, a resident of Marston's Mills. I was born in Marston's Mills, went to school there. My whole family lives in the town. My husband and now my child can say the same. My heart and soul lives in Marston's Mills specifically, and on Cape Cod generally. I'm an ardent advocate for women, the working class, for labor and for housing. Most people who know me would say I vote like it's a hobby, and I encourage everyone I know to do the same, regardless of political affiliation. Everything with it, I do within this community, I do for the community, and for those who are struggling to live and make their homes and livelihoods here. I'm a member of the Human Services Committee, of the Housing Committee, and now the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee. I'm motivated to be a part of these voluntary working groups for one reason, and that's to make life possible for your average working-class Cape Codder, who increasingly finds it difficult to live and stay on Cape. Recently, the town council ratified the selected appointees after applications were received and interviews were held. As someone who applied and was interviewed, one of the comments at your last meeting really struck out. I was singled out by one of the town counselors and deemed not worthy to be a part of this working group that is tasked with looking to future growth, development, and sustainability of Cape Cod. Not only that, but I was accused of being appointed without being interviewed, which was correctly corrected quickly by Counselor Cullum, thank you, as I was at work during the interview and did not have the whole fifteen minutes to spend. I had to make it short and sweet. My advocacy for housing has been quite brash, and yes, I do ruffle feathers, and there is a reason for that, especially lately. Every day that goes by, and every week and every month that goes by, when we can't find a year-round rental we can actually afford, literally eats away at our physical and mental health and pushes us further from home. Our levels of anxiety have skyrocketed surrounding this instability. Our lease ends in January, and what are we going to do? Where will we go? Where will we be? Will our son have a roof over his head? Will we be able to afford food, gas, healthcare? You know, what happens when a car with two hundred thousand miles has a flat tire or breaks down to a point that it's not worth it? What happens when, despite being squeezed from all sides and having every dime we make be taken up by rent utilities, car insurance, food, childcare costs, gas, we still do not qualify for assistance because of our income? I'm paying my own way for our education right here on Cape Cod. I want to work and continue to be a nurse right here on Cape Cod. Every class is a thousand dollars, and what happens when there's nothing left to do and nowhere left to go, and I can no longer afford to further my career? The real kicker is that many of the comments have been oddly focused on me lately have come from people who own their homes. They may even be able to afford them in the current housing market. There is no concern over a roof, or food, or rents, or oil, or gas. Everything I do and every comment I make, every letter I write, comes from that place of anxiety and wanting to make sure that everyone that I know and that surrounds me is able to stay on Cape, to work on Cape, and to live here, and keep a roof over their house, over their head, and food in their mouth, and clothes on the back. I am absolutely worthy of this committee. I am a hundred percent worthy, and you can rest assured that every effort I make on the planning committee will be an effort that comes from a place where I truly want Cape Cod to be, which is a thriving community where people can afford to live, to stay, and to make their homes and lives here, and to build their businesses and their history here. I just want to thank the town council for the support that I've received, for taking the time and effort to put this group together, and to being mindful to everyone that should be on it, to focusing on diversity, to focusing on, you know, who needs their voice most heard, you know, who is housing insecure. I appreciate that focus quite a bit, and it has not gone unnoticed. So I'm not sure where I'm at on the three-minute point, but I've cut a bit out, and I just wanted to, again, say thank you in that, yes, I am worthy, and there is no one here that's gonna tell me different. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Sarah, Lynn, is there anybody else for public comment, please?
Sarah has gone back over to see if whether or not there's anyone that needs to be brought over. One moment.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize for that. There is no other public comment, and I just want to make you aware that Counselor Mendez is having some technical difficulties. I am trying to get him back into the meeting. He's having trouble with his audio and his video, so.
Okay. We'll continue. At this point, actually, I would like to give the opportunity to, it's because there was a lot of attorney speak, either Attorney Nobr, Attorney Connolly, or Attorney McLaughlin, if you want to respond to any of the statements made, especially when they talked about meeting with you, things of that nature, speaking for you. I just want to give the opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Karen Nobr, town attorney. I think I'm going to wait to address this issue with all of you in executive session. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay. Any other counsel comment, response, please? Counselor Atsles, please.
So, I plan on responding, and it's just, the timing of it is interesting, because I was hoping my former colleague, who would have been on this call as well, but I'm responding to Ms. Moore's comments, and I do have to say, after, during and after last meeting, where a former colleague referred to someone who volunteered for a board or committee as not worthy, I was embarrassed and ashamed, and I truly hope that those of us on this council will remember the fact that these folks are volunteers, to be on various committees, various boards. And for any of us, any of us to deem someone not worthy is arrogant and high-handed. And I know that I'll make an effort to stay within my lines and appreciate what people are trying to do for this community, volunteers, especially for these different especially for these different committees and boards. And I hope that my colleagues will do the same because I don't know who we, who anyone thinks they are deeming someone not worthy. But unfortunately, my former colleague is no longer here to be able to face me as I say that, but we'll address that another time, I suppose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councillor Axelis. Any other response to public comment? Councillor Cullen, please.
Yes, I I have to say I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Axelis that Ms. Mort has been volunteering selflessly, working on committees that really get no airtime with the town council or priorities that get airtime with the council. She represents a part of our demographic that we rarely see. And I, for one, am proud of her for coming forward tonight and saying what she said and sticking up for herself and saying that she is worthy because she is worthy. And we all need to hear it. And thank you, councillor Axelis, for for sticking up for her and for advocating for for all voices to be heard in Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cullen. Councillor Hebert, you hold your hand up, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to respond to the plea that Megan Moore is is actually making on behalf of many people who are suffering with the housing issue. She's not alone at being told it's not just impossible throughout the Cape, but certainly right here in Barnstable that people are being put on notice that the house that they're living in, renting in right now, is going to go for sale. The rents are going up. And there's a, there's a really a cry that that I'm listening to that says, please recognize the fact that we have a housing crisis within the town of Barnstable, and we're trying to respond to that, looking at little ways and big ways to take steps that people like, hard-working people like Megan can hopefully, you know, stay here in the town of Barnstable and reasonably find housing, which we're a long way off from doing that, so. Megan, we, I hear you. I think we need to all hear you, and I think we need to respond to this housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hebert. Any other council response? Ms. Moore is a constituent of mine. She lives in my neighborhood and you know, I I find her to be quite enthusiastic, to be quite worthy, and has a perspective that is quite wise and is input in a certain area and can give a perspective that many of us cannot. And has a journey that has allowed her to be able to see things and experience things that other people in our community have experienced and experience in every aspect of their lives. And it's important to hear those stories and to hear about their journeys so that we can respond accordingly and to provide a way of life for them in the, here in the town that we live in. That is our job. And if one of us is not considered worthy, then none of us are worthy. So there's many times, quite honestly, that sometimes I feel unworthy or uninformed. And it's our job at those points in time to get informed, to make ourselves not necessarily even worthy, but just competent in certain areas in life, and that's the journey of life, so. You know, I'm, it's unfortunate that that occurred. Again, councillor Bogan is not here to respond to that, so not to be accusatory, but just know, Megan, that I feel that you are worthy. So, and I thank you for your participation in all aspects of our town and our community. Any other council response? Councillor Shaughnessy, please.
This is regarding the friends of the Centerville Cranberry Bog, and, you know, as I listen to all you talk about how much you've enjoyed this bog over the years, one thing that I haven't heard any of you mention that, you know, is on my mind, particularly as you talk about morality and whatnot, is that the seller of this property, the Jenkins family, for at least sixty years, were gracious enough and generous enough to allow their neighborhood to make use of their private property as a walking path, a jogging area, open space. And I just think more people should think about that, that, you know, because now they've sold it, and this will have a financial implication on them, should the town or should we choose to pursue it. And to me, there is a small piece of that that feels like a slap in the face to these longtime residents of the community, this widow who has finally sold this family property, who did very graciously and generously let the community access to her property. So, you know, there are two, three sides to this story, and you know, this person was a good neighbor to all of you for a very, very long time, so. You know, that would be something on my mind. If you're asking what might cause me to change, you know, that's just something I want to throw out there is that you talk about this as open space, but it really wasn't. It was private property that the owner generously allowed all of you to use for decades upon decades. And I, you know, in in some of your talking, I mean, there's almost a bit of entitlement, which I think, you know, the truth of the matter is it was only through this owner's generosity and graciousness that all of you were allowed to venture onto this property as if it was public property for all those years. So that's sort of another side of the picture that's on my mind. And I just wanted to throw it out there. I want to thank all of you for caring so much about your community. I've grown up here and enjoyed many, many a cranberry bog in my life, both for walking and ice skating. So I completely understand where you're all coming from, but, you know, I ask also that you think of the seller and, you know, this person that has provided this benefit to you all for so long. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Shaughnessy. Any other council response, public comment? Okay. Okay, not seeing any. Let's move on. It is now time for Town Manager Communications. We do have a written form that we've all been sent. We are going to move on without reading the entire Town Manager Communications, but I would, and I've spoken with, and I'd like Town Manager Ellis, if he could just discuss the Fourth of July fireworks, please.
Good evening. Mark Ellis, Town Manager. Thank you for this opportunity to provide counsel with an update to the item number one on my written communication. And that is that the Fourth of July fireworks will not occur this year on the Fourth of July in Lewis Bay. And at this point, we are exercising our option to move them to Labor Day weekend. There'll be a formal notice, press release going out. I think it went out late today. I'm not sure when that will be posted, you know, online or in a future newspaper. I also sent the councillors a memo from Derek Lawson, our Director of Marine Environmental Affairs, to myself earlier this month that summarized what was occurring. If we go back to Fourth of July day last year, we received notice midday from Mass Wildlife, Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program that they wanted us not to proceed with fireworks because of our barges, it's a contracted barge, but the barges proximity to plovers and turns that are basically, we know they're located in the Calves Beach area and also on the Yarmouth side of Lewis Bay. At that point, we had, we were into the afternoon. I believe I spoke with Director Lawson. Later in the day, three o'clock-ish, the fireworks proceeded. And we have been in discussions with Mass Heritage and Endangered Species since that occurred. Recently, in, I believe, this month, we were notified that Mass Heritage had expanded its radius of jurisdiction from a half a mile to three quarters of a mile. Director Lawson took this under review and came back to me with the conclusions that we've shared with you in that May eleventh memo. Simplified, we don't have anywhere to put a barge in Lewis Bay that can either functionally and safely shoot fireworks or, I guess, and/or can remain compliant with that three-quarter of a mile area of, you know, restriction from the state. At that point, it was recommended to me, and I concurred, and I proceeded with exercising our option to have our fireworks on Labor Day weekend. We will continue to try to look for options in Lewis Bay in the future, though I think it is limited, if possible at all. We will also, and our desire is to have fireworks on the Fourth of July, as we've been doing since two thousand and eight. By moving it to Labor Day weekend, the turns and the plovers have had their nests, and they have dispersed from nesting and therefore are not regulated the same way. We don't have the same issue on Labor Day weekend that we do on the Fourth of July. So we're going to continue to look for where we might do this, but as you can imagine, it takes a tremendous amount of planning, especially, well, it doesn't matter if it's land-based or water-based, it takes planning. We're going to look at both. We're going to do that with the hope that we can hold them again on the Fourth of July next year, and we're going to engage our community in that discussion, both on the water or land-based. That's my update at this point. We're disappointed, but on the other hand, we're certainly not going to vi- knowingly violate what was, you know, what what has been directed to us by the state of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Ellis. Any council questions in regards, councillor Axelis, please?
So is it, so I don't think I'm a rocket scientist to figure this one out, but I'll ask anyways. So as long as the plovers continue to nest there, we're likely not going to have fireworks on the Fourth of July. Is that? Would that be accurate?
I would say that as long as they are nesting in the Lewis Bay area, that's a correct statement. It's going to be a challenge. We will look to see if we can. We'll continue to look at every option, but at this point, the way that it is presented in the attached documents that I had sent with that, and if a council, any council, I did not receive that, just let me know and I'll resend it. But there's two diagrams there. And basically, to answer your question, yeah, Louis, Louis Bay, it doesn't look as though we'll be able to do it there as long as we have this issue relevant to plovers and turns. And the populations are growing. And there's also accretion going on the east side, the Yarmouth side, which has actually extended their nesting areas further into the bay, which, you know, makes it even more challenging to find an area where one might do this.
Can I have one more follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Did their forensic investigation show without question that the plover that was damaged and the turn that was, that was dead was from, in fact, from the fireworks?
I would have to ask, Director Lawson and Nina Coleman were in direct discussion. So I I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I can get you the answer as they understand it, but.
Well, maybe we can look at some of our other beaches.
Well, that's the intent, but I don't think a quick move, let's say, west along the coast without first discussing it with our community and bringing in the tens of thousands of people that come with fireworks might have been acceptable. I think we need to have a broader discussion about land-based or water-based or wherever it is, what are the impacts, and make sure everybody knows that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other council comment? Councillor Hebert, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Town Manager, for your diligence in this, the situation, which we're, we're certainly Barnstable strong. And if we end up doing it on Labor Day, it'll be an extra traction for an extra grouping of visitors coming to see us because I don't know of any others, any other towns that do it on Labor Day. So I'm sure if you have to, we're gonna make it, it's gonna make it work for us. I know that fireworks are still, I believe, illegal. And you would never know it. I don't know about anybody else's precinct, but my precinct is alive and well with fireworks on the Fourth of July. In front of me, behind me, all around me. So if you want to drive to Precinct Three, you have a fireworks show. You're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hebert. That's a good point, sir. Councillor Cullen.
Thank you. So are we, just to clarify, are we actively looking, we're not actively looking for another location for this July Fourth, we're just gonna default to the Labor Day show? Is that correct?
There isn't, there isn't time to 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 do that, in my opinion.
So what happens with the the money spent on the barge and everything? Does that get returned to us, or is there? What happens?
We we encumber money. At this point, we were exercising that option. So there is no money lost to to that effort.
So is it, can we actively look for another spot? Because I'm with councillor Axelis that the the piping plovers aren't gonna go anywhere. They're just, until they're not endangered anymore, we're gonna live with this, so.
I've created an internal, you know, review process for where to do that. And I've, director-level staff, and they are commencing now for next year.
Great.
And we're gonna look at water-based and land-based and, you know, certainly Director Lawson, Director Jenkins, Director Poyant, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn, myself, will all be involved in that with the intent of finding a location that's acceptable for the Fourth of July.
Honestly, the the location at Lewis Bay has always been very tight in overrun neighborhoods like crazy. You can't move near my house. I'm sure councillor Axelis knows what it's like to, I think, we're up here, you mean, so it's, no matter where you put it, it's gonna be very congested, but Craigville would be a great option and hold a bunch of beach chairs. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Well, but but the exact same statement would be made at Craigville if we tried to plunk it down there on July Fourth without talking to our community first.
Yeah, I agree. I think you should definitely talk to the community. But it's also really fun. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, the, and when we have fireworks, a fireworks show that people can go to, there are, I believe, less fireworks in the neighborhood. When people have an opportunity to go to go see them, and they're really beautiful and fun. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cullen. Any other council comment?
Last one.
Councillor Axelis.
The interesting thing about the fireworks, the private displays people do on our public beaches, they're likely doing more harm to the piping plovers than the fireworks in Lewis Bay were. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Axelis. Okay, any other comment? Thank you, Town Manager Ellis. I thought that was an important point of information that people would have interest in. I just want to set the record straight before the news gets out. And before we start seeing more bumper stickers that say piping plovers taste like chicken and things of that nature. So we'll get the facts out there. Moving on, Vice President Shep, if you could please help me act on the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the town council meeting held on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
First and second, any discussion? Not seeing any? Move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Axelis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy. Starr.
I think I will abstain because I wasn't at the meeting, thank you.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
So that's eleven yes, one abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it is time now for town official communications, elected officials, boards, community staff, commission reports, correspondence and announcements. Any councilites may comment. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek. First of all, I would like to commend the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition. They got recognition in the Boston Globe. Top of the fold for their work with the. Nitrogen nitrogen removing. Devices that that they have been advocating, so I'd like to say that Barnstable is looking progressive. Through that effort. Secondly, the Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee is hosting a spring. Walking Weekend as they have for years. This will be over Friday, June third to Sunday, June fifth. And the information can be found on the town's website under the. Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee's webpage. And finally. It's been an honor and privilege to serve with Council Bogan. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark, any other council correspondents? Council Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levek, I just wanted to mention a really wonderful opportunity that's being offered through the Council on Aging. It's UCLA memory training. It's an innovative educational course, this is not for people with Alzheimer's or dementia. But it's a course that teaches individuals different techniques to improve their memory in a fun way. It's four sessions, they're all being offered at the Osterfield Library. And if you'd like more information, you can speak with Stacy Cullen at the Council on Aging. Five oh eight, eight six two, four seven five oh, extension four seven six five. There is also information about this on the town of Barnstable's social media. But I wanted to get it out there because it's a really great opportunity. Fun class with a lot of different exercises that I think would be great for people in the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Shaughnessy. Any other council comment? Okay, I would just like to announce that the council and the town clerk received a letter from. David Bogan dated May seventeenth. Says, Dear Ms. Quirk, on Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty two, I established. The town of Sandwich as my primary place of residence, accordingly, I hereby tender my resignation. As Town Councilor representing the town of Barnstable's Fifth Precinct. Respectively submitted David Bogan. So I just wanted to make that announcement that Councilor David Bogan has submitted his resignation. So we appreciate his service to the town. And his input and his wisdom over the last few years, and we wish him the best of luck moving forward. Not see, oh, Council Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for. For announcing that Council Bogan has now moved to Sandwich. Thanks for his service. But is this the right time to? Are we going to? Do we have time for this election coming twenty twenty two for someone to? Put, take out application for his position?
So. Maybe I would refer to Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for a response, is that okay? Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy? Could you help me with that?
Yep. Okay, so. Yes, there'll be time to have. Certification certification of. An individual who would like to run for this position. We're not gonna get into too many dates or anything like that, I know that the primary is coming up. And we. We have gotten, the town clerk has been speaking to the Secretary of State's office. To see if that's the proper date to have the. Election, again, there's different. There's ways in which you have to proceed, we need to come back to council. On June second and actually talk about this and have council set a date and stuff like that, so I'm just gonna say at this point. Anne has looked at all the, looked at all the information and. She will give you an update on the June second meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet, for that, and great question, Council Hebert, thank you, any other? Council comment? I know it's a little early right now, but as we're going into the presentation, Joint Base Cape Cod, and then after that, going into executive session. I think I'll, we'll we'll take the five minute break that we would take later on, let's just take it now. And then we can move forward into, you know, gives time to to bring in the. The members for Joint Base Cape Cod for the presentation, thank you, five minutes.
You're all set to go back on the record.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody back to Town Council Meeting. It's May 19th, 2022, and I have 8:08 on my clock. And right now, we're moving into our agenda with a Joint Base Cape Cod Commander's Brief, our annual brief from the commanders of Joint Base Cape Cod. And I just to go through the names of the people who are with us from Joint Base Cape Cod. I have Captain Rob Porter from the Coast Guard Air Station, Captain Sean Hannigan, also commanding officer, Coast Guard Base Cape Cod, Colonel Matthew Porter, Army National Guard Camp Edwards commander. We have Colonel Tim Gordon with the Air Force and Lieutenant Colonel Timothy Skip Sheehan with Space Force Commander. So first, I'd like to introduce Colonel Tim Gordon. He's going to kick off our presentation. Thank you for joining us.
Great. Thank you for having us. Good evening, Council President and Council members. I'm Colonel Tim Gordon, the Vice Wing Commander for the 102nd Intel Wing. And so General Phoe's not with us tonight, so I'll just kind of give the big overview. Joint Base Cape Cod is comprised of 22,000 acres. And the five main tenants that that are here to present tonight, the Air National Guard sits on about 3,3500, 3600 acres in the southeast portion of that 22,000 acres. So what I want to do tonight is provide a brief overview of our wing and then cover some of our recent initiatives and operations. And so we do have a slide, an overview slide. So the 102nd Intel Wing, next, yeah, slide down, please. Yeah, keep, keep, keep going. That's it. Stay right there. Sure. So, so the 102nd Intel Wing is part of the Massachusetts Air National Guard. Our primary mission is to provide precision intelligence to Air Force operations across the globe. And the wing is comprised of about 1,200 members, 1,200 airmen spread across these five groups that appear on this slide, about 400 of the 1,200 are full-time airmen. So starting on the left, the 102 ISRG, ISR stands for Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance. This is a network-centric mission, and it is part of a broader Air Force global network system. And I think the key takeaway is that we are one of 27 intel production sites in the United States Air Force. And this mission centers around the concept of reach back, meaning commanders on the ground across the globe can essentially reach back and get critical intel relative to their area of operation. And they can do this in real time. Next over, the 202 ISRG, this group operates in the cyberspace environment, providing cyber intel to Air Force operations and joint operations worldwide. And they really focus on collecting intel on an adversary's cyber footprint, their vulnerabilities, and their capabilities. So I think we're all unfortunately too familiar with the reality and the potential impact of cyber attacks. So fortunately, our military maintains strong cybersecurity capabilities, and the 102nd is certainly proud to be a part of it. To the far right is the 253rd CEIG, Cyber Engineering and Installation Group. This group is responsible for the engineering installation of comm lines, radar, navigation systems at Air Force bases and Air National Guard bases across the country and globally. And the projects that they do range from installing security cameras on buildings to some more, far more complex fiber optic computer networking installations throughout an entire base. And a couple of years ago, this group participated in a cyber infrastructure project on White House property. So they're doing, they're doing some pretty important stuff. In the middle, the 102 Medical Group, the medical group has two missions. We ensure that our wing members are fit to fight, right? And we get our physicals, vaccinations, dental exams. And they also serve as the field medical unit for the FEMA Region One Homeland Response Force. So that's the medical group. And then last but certainly not least, the Mission Support Group. And the Mission Support Group keeps the base open for business, right? They're responsible for roads, utilities, base communications, and perhaps most importantly, security. So if we could go to the next slide. So I'll talk a little bit on the left side about our facilities and infrastructure. So about for over 10 years now, we've been transforming our base from, from a fighter industrial base to a much smaller intel campus-like base. So we've been investing quite a bit into our facilities since 2018. We've invested about $30 million, another 15 in the, in the planning phases. And we, as I said earlier, we're trying to get smaller, right? We're trying to shrink. So we have, we have about 3,600 acres that we currently are responsible for that, that is assigned to the Air National Guard. And our goal is to get down around 600, even less than 600 acres would, would be ideal. And would, it would be all we needed. And then finally, on utilities, Town of Barnstable certainly familiar with the, the exchange agreement between the United States Air Force and Converge ASUS Town of Barnstable. We are, we are expecting that to be signed. We thought it would be today. We're hoping it's tomorrow. But certainly by the end of the month is the expectation. It has gone through all of the due diligence by the Air Force. And we are just awaiting that to be signed, and then we turn toward a period of transition. And finally, shifting to the right side of the slide, I just want to close on our people. We have about, we have about, like I said, 1,200 members, 227 are Cape Codders. I know it's not on the slide, but 30 of our members are from the town of Barnstable. And just to give you an idea, an example of the good work that our guardsmen have been doing, I'm going to just highlight our domestic operations to the Commonwealth and to the country over the past two years during COVID. So we kind of measure everything in the number of days. So as it relates to COVID support, the 102nd Intel Wing has provided 12,000 days of support. Most of that has been in the Commonwealth, but some of it has been to other states. We also provide about 1,300 days of security and crowd, crowd control support to the Boston Police Department and other cities in Massachusetts. And then another 1,700 days for inaugural and post inaugural support. So our airmen at the 102nd are committed to the country and to the Commonwealth. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and highlight some of what they do. So with that, that completes my briefing pending any questions that you may have.
Why don't we move on, and then we'll take questions all at the same time, if that's okay with you, Colonel Gordon.
That's, yeah, that's fine. So, so next up is Lieutenant Colonel Skip Sheehan from Six Base Warning System, US Space Force. Over to you, Skip.
All right. Thanks, sir. Good evening, everybody. This is Lieutenant Colonel Skip Sheehan, commander of the Six Base Warning Squadron. So I'm coming up on the end of my time here. I'm leaving next month, and a new commander is coming in to take over the reins. It's been an exciting time in command. Last year, we celebrated the name change of our installation last June, becoming Cape Cod Space Force Station. But what hasn't changed is the mission we've been doing here since our radar went operational in 1980. Primary mission being missile warning. We're constantly looking out over the horizon for anything that might be coming our way, to quickly identify it, get that information to the decision makers so that they can do what's necessary to keep the homeland safe. So while we're providing that deterrence mission and deterring our adversaries from attacking us, what my operators are doing, the vast majority of the time when they're sitting on shift is configuring the radar to track objects in space and contribute data for the Space Domain Awareness Mission. So we're looking out about 5,000 kilometers out into space, tracking anything that comes into our field of view. And for a bit of frame of reference, right now, we are actively tracking about over 45,000 objects in space. And only about 10% of those are active satellites, which means we've got a lot of pieces of debris. We've got inactive satellites. And so we, it's so important to understand where things are and what's happening in space so that we can keep our assets safe, but also to know what our adversaries are doing. If they've got something that can maneuver, if I'm expecting it to come up at one point and it's not there, we need to get that information out to the right people so they can figure out what's going on. So it's an incredibly important mission. Within the past few months, Russia launched an anti-satellite weapon, destroying one of their own satellites as a demonstration of capability. That created 1,700 pieces of debris in lower Earth orbit. And each one of those pieces of debris are moving at 17,000 miles per hour, which is the same speed as the International Space Station. And if anything were to happen, if the International Space Station came close to those pieces of debris, that could be catastrophic for our astronauts and the other people up there. So our job here on the Cape is incredibly important to everything that's going on in the space domain. And if you go on to the next slide, you can see a little bit of our people and the team. Well, we're about 130 folks out here. I've got airmen from the Air Force. I've got guardians from the Space Force. I've got civilians that work for the Department of the Air Force and contractors. And the team here, we make it home. We love the community. This is my second assignment out here. And it's so awesome to be back for two years. Sad to be leaving, but really enjoyed everything we did on the Cape. So with that, saving questions for the end, I'll turn it over to my Coast Guard counterparts.
My, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you much. My name is Captain Rob Potter. I will be followed quickly behind with my counterpart at Base Cape Cod, of Sean Hannigan. So I'm in charge of the air station, and Sean runs the, the base. Next slide, please. So quickly about the air station. So we are 176 strong for both our active duty and our civilian personnel. And the main workhorses of our air station are the three H-60 helicopters that we have and the three HC-144 Alpha. That's the cargo plane you see on the right. That's, those are the, those are the total of six aircraft that we work here. We will cover basically all of New England. So any type of search and rescue or any type of mission that the Coast Guard has from New Jersey to Canada will fall under our area of responsibility. And even in addition to the aircraft that we have here in our troops, we are also augmented by the voluntary or the volunteer service of the Coast Guard, which is a Coast Guard auxiliary. And with that, we have utilization of up to 40 aircraft, which are typically Cessnas, twin-engine aircraft. And they will do anything from law enforcement patrols for us to ICE patrols, to even help and understand what's going on with, you know, different parts of New York and the harbor. Next slide, please. So with that, kind of like, what do we do? So of course, being a Coast Guard, we're known for our bread and butter of search and rescue. If I look back, you know, we had a very, a very historic case about a year ago of the Atlantic Destiny where fishermen were sinking. And we worked with Canada to save 31 people really out of the teeth of the North, North Atlantic. Just recently, if I look back on Mother's Day, we had a very notable case that received a lot of attention actually on social media, where a sailboat had four people on board. They were about 80 miles off of, off of New York. The sailboat hit a rogue wave, completely rolled, was demasted. And our crews were able to go out and save all four of those people and bring them back to safety. But in addition to search and rescue, we also do drug enforcement. We do that both here and we also do it down south. So we will have deployed crews that work down south to work the drug trades in the, in the Caribbean and also work for the safety of life at sea with migrant ops. Also, we had a notable case a couple of months ago here in Nantucket, where we worked with a combined effort with the Postal Service, our Coast Guard Investigative Service, and some other, some other agencies to confiscate over 1,000 illicit pills and also $31,000 in, in, in cash. On top of that, too, we also have a $14 billion fishing, fishing industry here in the Northeast, which we also work very hard with daily patrols to enforce those areas to make sure that the fishermen are fishing for the right species. And additionally to, they're fishing in those right areas. Next slide. So I want to leave you with this. This is a list of all of the awards that this air station has won over the past couple of years. Now, this is not to brag, well, maybe just a little. But it's, but what I wanted to do is I wanted to highlight the men and women that work here, the men and women that live as our neighbors. They, we've had back-to-back pile of the years. We've had, our safety team has been, received international recognition for the work that they've done. The crew that I talked about, the sailboat, just stood at center court at game seven of the Celtics and was given a standing ovation for their work in TD Garden for everything that they did. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you. We're very honored to be a part of this community. And with that, I would like to introduce Sean, Captain Sean Hannigan, who is the base commander here at Base Cape Cod.
Thank you. Being of Town Council, hi, my name is Sean Hannigan and glad to be presenting to you tonight. And I'm originally from Massachusetts, so I'm psyched to be here at Base Cape Cod. And I've been here for a couple of years. Base Cape Cod was established in 2014. Shout out to Andy Clyburn. He was a commanding officer back then for three years. We have tenant commands that include the air station Cape Cod, as we mentioned, maritime safety and security team. And they provide a broad range of port security and harbor defense missions, enhancing readiness in our nation's strategic ports. They lead or augment Coast Guard forces during major marine events, contingencies, and other Coast Guard law enforcement operations in ports, harbors, waterways, and coastal regions. We also have the Port Security Unit 301. And PSUs are expeditionary and quick response forces capable of worldwide deployment. They provide security for forward deployed base camps and ports around the world where needed and are trained to provide anti-terrorist force protection in coastal defense for missions inside and outside the United States. We also have onboard the Northeast Regional Fishery Training Center. And they provide training to federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies to enforce living marine resource regulations set forth by NOAA for the protection and sustainment of a $5.4 billion industry throughout the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic region. Also onboard, we have the ForceCom Armory and Range, the Marine Safety Detachment Cape Cod. And regionally, we support sector Southeast New England. And they have area responsibility covering 3,000 square miles of offshore waters, 1,200 miles of coastline of Rhode Island, southeastern Massachusetts, including Cape Cod and the islands. They're responsible for wide spectrum of Coast Guard operational missions, which includes search and rescue, law enforcement, maintenance of aids, navigation, port safety, security, marine environmental protection, waterways management, marine inspection, and casualty investigation. Next slide, please. And here's our Mission Support Service Line. We have several service lines here, and we have a total of 265 personnel on our base, including active duty, reserve, and civilian. And we have a com control our base operations, which includes cafeteria, which serves over 20,000 meals a year, facilities engineering, procurement and contracting, health, safety, and work-life, which includes a clinic that provides medical and dental support, electronic support, and personnel services, including housing. We have 155 family housing units on the base, rural welfare and recreation, including a child development center and a servicing personnel office that provides admin and pay and personnel support. And that concludes my part of the brief. It was a pleasure to brief you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Hannigan. And I guess I would take this opportunity to introduce Colonel Matthew Porter.
Good evening. This is a, thank you for the introduction. This is Colonel Matthew Porter. I'm the commander of Camp Edwards, which is the Army side of Joint Base Cape Cod. And I'll try to be brief and get through some of these slides, some of them you've seen before. But for our structure, we look very similar to a town as far as our departments that we have. You know, it's, 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 you know, and essentially I am a base manager on the full-time side and the commander on, of the, of the military piece of it on the, on the military side. So but underneath us, we have multiple tenant units as well that reside on the base, whether it's aviation, EOD, engineering, cyber. We have an RTI, which is our, essentially our, our, you know, university, so to speak, where we have a lot of our training for our soldiers in the classroom environment. Also, Barnstable County Dispatch Center is located in our fire station, state fire station that's located in base, as well as a water cleanup program that spends their time cleaning up the contamination that resides from the central impact area on the northern 15,000 acres. About 150 full-time personnel, but we serve about 6,000 drilling guardsmen. So that's important to note. We are the primary location for training within Massachusetts for the Army National Guard, as well as one of the primary locations where surrounding states in the, in the Northeast region send their soldiers to train as well. On average, we send about 20% of our soldiers from the Mass National Guard, at least over the last two years, deployed within the state, and another 20% deployed overseas. So we are quite busy. And, and like I said, Camp Edwards is the primary location where we do our training. Next slide, please. Training in, on Camp Edwards in 2021 continued to rise. So we've had an upward trend over the past several years regardless of COVID. So we've continued to train and train very safely. We have a couple of exercises that you may have seen last year or heard last year. We'll continue this year, such as Operation Biking. So that's an airborne operation where we have Civil Affairs Battalion last year, and it'll be a brigade, which is about a couple thousand soldiers will be jumping out of airplanes, aircraft onto the airfield. We've designated that as a landing zone with the assistance of the Coast Guard. And that is a location where we will be conducting operations, I'll be jumping out of airplanes. So you, you may see some aircraft in July flying over or doing some turns over the base. And that will be part of that exercise. We do quite a few different types of training. We do some virtual training. We do some training within the lower cantonment area. But we also do much of our, our training within the upper 15,000 acres, also known as the Water Reserve. That's where we have our range complex. That's where we have our maneuver space, and that's where a lot of our soldiers continue to train. On that note, sometimes we find some unexplored ordinance that is up in that location. We had that recently, and I know some of you maybe at least read about it in the papers or heard it actually in, in reality. So we had a three, 3.5 millimeter rockets, which we found following a, a burn that we did up there as part of our habitat restoration project. So we have to call in state police and active duty EOD out of Newport, Navy EOD out of Newport, and they come in and they actually dispose of the munitions. That is our process. We generally try to notify the public when that happens. Oftentimes, it's a fairly small scale and does not create a lot of noise. Some environmental factors in this blast, UXO explosion, actually created some noise because of the low ceiling and the cloud cover, as well as the amount of explosive that we had to use in order to dispose of the munitions. In the future, we will do a little bit better job of notifying the public and certainly the police and fire, different communities that surround the base. But that was something that happened recently, and we do that quite often. But like I said, in the future, we will take extra care to make sure that we notify the public. Next slide, please. So our Natural Resource Department has been pretty busy, as you, you probably hear about on, on a regular basis. This is a major piece of Chapter 47. We are obligated to ensure that we protect the habitat, protect the aquifer, as well as, and when we, in doing so, we can, we can exercise compatible military training on the upper 15,000 acres. So our Natural Resource Department is a cornerstone of what we do. There's 41 listed species on the base. And they aren't there because of the training that we do. They're there because of the resource, Natural Resource Department and the care that we take with protecting the habitat. So they're thriving on the base. And they require the same type of environment that we require for soldier training. So it works very symbiotically and, and is really is a remarkable program. Next slide, please. So part of their program is wildfire management. And so we have a wildfire coordinator on base. And his job is to ensure that we continually regenerate the ecosystem that, on the base, that, that, that the species increases, the habitat that the species need to thrive. So that's, that habitat is the pine baron, and that is a globally rare ecosystem. It really only exists in a few locations up in the Northeast, down on Long Island and New Jersey. So but it's very dependent on disturbance, which means we have to put fire on the ground quite often in order to regenerate it. So it enjoys that pitch pine that you know and very well, but it also has to, thrives on those blueberries as well as the scrub oak that is in the end of story. So those, that's an important habitat that we continue to, to manage for. We're obligated to do that. That is part of Chapter 47 on what we do and the species in which we care for. And we try to put about 600 acres of fire on the, on the ground every year. We generally fall a little short of that, but that's the goal. And it's about 20 And it's about 20 to 22 days of burning. So when you see some smoke that happens, we try to manage that very actively to ensure that it does not become a disturbance or nuisance, but we are obligated to do that. And it's very important for the, for the species that we care for. Next slide, please. This is a slide that I just wanted to put out because it's been asked for by many different town select boards or councils. Just to talk about a little bit of what we're looking to do in the future and what we're doing now. So currently, projects that we are working on is we've decommissioned two 25 meter ranges. This is ranges for small arms firing. And then we restored a 25 meter range. So we took two offline and we restored one, made it a little bit bigger and, and modernized it. We have the multi-purpose machine gun range, which I know everybody's heard much about. I'll talk about that in a second on the next slide. And then in future projects, really what we're looking to do is provide a range which we can do some maneuver live fire and extend our automated record fire range, which is our basic qualification range for our small arms rifle, out about six lanes wider in order to make it a standard range. The infantry squad battle course already has a footprint on the base. The base historically has about, has had about 1,388 acres of ranges. We currently have 33. So we're really just adding, modernizing existing footprints of ranges that we have. And we really don't anticipate going anywhere close to 1388. We're really looking about maybe 350 at the most. So with the multi-purpose machine gun and infantry squad battle course and extension of the RF range that we already have, that's the extent of what we're looking to do for ranges in the upper 15,000 acres. As far as Contonman, we do have a projected new armory that we will build. That's a Milcom project, approximately about a 20, $30 million project that will happen in Contonman. That will be for engineers and a piece of our aviation battalion that exists, really just modernizing their facility. And then we have physical fitness track. We have a design for that, but it's not funded as of yet. We have our unit training equipment site, which is finally, the main location is being moved into and then phase two, which is essentially the demolition of their old site and the construction of a cold storage area on that same location. It will happen in the next year. We continue to demolish some of the World War II structures as we modernize some of those facilities. And that is just a process that we've been doing over many years. Next slide, please. Lastly, just an update on the MPMG range. Really not much has happened since last year. We did finish our mass environmental review process as well as the national environmental review process. And then we started into the EMC, the Environmental Management Commission process, which is a separate regulatory process that we have to do as part of Chapter 47. We started that with the Science Advisory Council. Really their obligation is to determine whether or not the range is compliance with Chapter 47. Science Advisory Council did vote that yes, it is in compliance with Chapter 40, 47. We have yet to have a community advisory council to meeting in order to start that process and therefore we have not had the EMC process. The EPA has chosen to come in and do a sole source aquifer review to determine if there's going to be any impacts from the range or anything else on the, on the aquifer from this range. So we are really just waiting, I think, and that's what the Community Advisory Council and the EMC are waiting for in order to continue on with that process. Tentative, we did have some dates, which you can see at the bottom there for the Community Advisory Council, Science Advisory Council and the EMC. Those dates were for a separate meeting that was not going to have the MPMG on the agenda. That has since moved to the right and we still only have tentative dates and they have not been confirmed. So those dates right there are not valid at this point. So just, you can just erase those from what you're looking at. The, the EMC will publish some dates in the near future to, about future meetings. Next slide, please. Lastly, I just want to touch on this for, really for our community outreach piece of it. We've been holding public tours and presentations over the past year and a half. They've been extremely successful. We continue to have dates and we'll continue to do the public tours throughout the summer on a monthly basis. But if you have large groups that would like to organize tours, please call or communicate with Kathleen Culber. She is my community relations specialist. She's outstanding, she's been doing an outstanding job. Additionally, we've been doing presentations over the winter and certainly even during the summer. I did one yesterday and I've done several in the past weeks. But those are also good, but I would say that the, the best way is seeing what we do and coming out and we will talk about both our, all our habitat restoration projects, our water conservation and preservation projects and cleanup programs, as well as the training and how they work and intertwined with each other. And it's, it's a pretty remarkable symbiotic relationship that we have. We do address all the community concerns, whether it's groundwater, habitat, noise, carbon sequestration, smokes, traffic, safety, UXO. All those things are open for, for comment. We demonstrate and we show what we're doing and there's really nothing off limits. So if you have a question, you have, you know, anything you want to talk about, please come to the tours and, and, and see what we do. We'd love to have you. That concludes my briefing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Sarah, for helping with the slide presentation. And at this point, any council questions for any of the commanders? Counselor Clark, please.
Leveck, and thank you very much for this comprehensive presentation. When you said that those EMC dates are no longer valid, how would the public best find out when those dates will be changed or reposted?
So we, we post them on our, and the website for our Environmental Resource Center is, is, is part of that presentation. We do post them there. The DEP and all the, the different agencies that are part of the AMC, I believe, do post them as well. Like I said, it's, it's a meeting that we present at and they also are notified within the Cape Cod Times and I think the Enterprise as well is actually a article that is put or a, an advertisement is actually submitted within there as well. So we try to advertise as much as possible. But like I said, it is a, it's not our meeting. We just present that, but we do our best to advertise it as well.
Thank you. If, if it's possible, can you please deliver those dates to the Town of Barnstable for residents to be aware if they are interested? Thank you.
Yes, yes, Counselors, I will, thanks.
Any other questions for any of the commanders? Counselor Rapacek, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentations. I know that this has been an ongoing question for me and the council with regards to the application submitted by the Town of Barnstable regarding your wastewater treatment plant. And I see Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn here. Perhaps you could update the council on where that stands with regards to the Town of Barnstable?
I can update you in terms of where the exchange agreement is. As I said earlier, it's with Secretary of the Air Force. We're just waiting for final signature on that.
Okay, all right. And remind me again, how many acres are being proposed to be clear cut for the range?
For the MPMG range, there's the, what we are funded to do is approximately 98 acres. And just for context too, so I did mention, and this is, this is important. This, we mentioned this on the tour as well, but with the habitat that we do manage, again, it's, it's a disturbance dependent habitat. It's a pine baron. And we put about 600 acres, roughly between four and 600 acres of fire on the ground. So when we talk about clearing or sequestration of carbon, it's a habitat that relies on, on that. So it's something that you just have to keep in context as well. I know it's an important thought that is brought up often with the public. But for the habitat and the species that rely on that habitat, fire is essential.
Oh, I get that, absolutely. And I, I, I understand that. But I, I was, I was referring to absolute clear cutting of trees to provide room for the range, not burning, but clear cutting. Is that being proposed?
It is, it, well, it is clear cutting, yes, yes, ma'am.
So, so, and you're saying that's 98 acres?
98 acres, correct, for the range. So we are funded, we have a $9.8 million project that is funded and that is for 98 acres of clearing. So that is for our medium and light machine gun. For during our environmental process, we identified that we would like to clear an additional approximately 72 acres of land to account for a 50 cal machine gun range. It's not a range, but it's just an extension of that range out to 1,500 meters. That is not funded at this time. That would be an additional phase in the future if it was funded. So it's important just to identify the differentiation between the, the two.
Okay, and I would concur with my fellow counselor that the advertisement of public hearings with regard to these discussions be made, made aware by our residents.
Yes, ma'am. And I would, just for clarification too. So in the next EMC meetings will likely not have MPMG as part of their agenda. They will likely, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the EMC. I'm just giving you kind of what I've, what I've spoken to them about. The next EMC meetings that will have the MPMG on their agenda probably will not be until the end of the calendar year once the sole source aquifer review is done.
Thank you.
Any council response questions for any of the commanders? Okay, not seeing any. Just want to thank you for being with us and thank you for the, just want to thank you for your service to our country. So, and for all that you do, it's always great to hear about, especially all the Coast Guard, all the, really the, the heroes, you know, all the, and it's always, you know, these presentations are always difficult for Colonel Porter because he always has to follow up with all the savings of lives, drug busts, cash, you know, replenishment and things of that nature. So it's a tough act to follow, but you always do a good job, Colonel Porter, and go Lakers, so. Went to high school with, with Colonel Porter, so I always like to mention that, so.
Poneclaw Lakers, he's not talking about the LA Lakers.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Very good, thank you for the clarification. So, anyway, so if there's no other comment, I just like to bid you all good night and thank you again for the update and we look forward to hearing from you next year.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for all you do. Much appreciated. Okay. All right, moving on to the next piece. I move to go into executive session pursuant to general laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation since a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on litigation position of the town and town council. Specifically, the council will discuss two matters. One, a potential lawsuit to be filed by the town against Susan Jenkins, trustee of the Jenkins Nominee Trust and Sam Slater, the seller and buyer, I'm sorry, the Jenkins seller. Slater is the buyer respectively of the four parcels of land located in Centerville, Massachusetts and known as 1246 Bump River Road, 1271 Bump River Road, Bump River Road in Marie and Terrace, regarding claims under general law, Chapter 61A. And number two, a lawsuit filed against town by the town by TGA Clean Energy LLC regarding claims under general laws, Chapter 40A, Section 39. The council will return to public session after the executive session. I just want to give attention to Counselor Atzalos.
I will be refusing myself from the first matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Atzalos. So we have a first and a second, and we need a roll call vote, please.
Counselors. Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Rapacek?
Yes.
Beaver? Leveck?
Yes.
Mendy's?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one recuse.
Thank you. And then we will let. And then we will let.
You're all set, go ahead.
Thank you, welcome back everybody, thank you for your patience. We're still May 19, 2022, it is 10:30 and we are continuing open session for our meeting, Town Council meeting tonight. Moving on to our first order of new business, Vice President, please if you could, 2022-034.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is an item of old business requiring a public hearing and a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item 2022-034, amending the code of the town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 240, zoning by expanding the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district to include the property located at A10 Wakeby Road, Marston's Mills. Assessors map 013, parcels 004, 005, and 052, and by requiring a special permit for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations located with any residential district located within the overlay district as written.
Second.
Second. First and the second, and photovoltaic is a big word to say at 10:30 at night, not once but twice. Okay, and we have Attorney Mike Ford with us as well, welcome, and over to you, Director Jenkins with the rationale, please.
Thank you, President LeBeck, I will gladly turn it over to Senior Planner Jim Cupford for the rationale.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, good evening, Council, Jim Cupford, Senior Planner, Planning and Development. If I may share my screen, I have a brief presentation for the council. Mr. President, can you see that okay?
I sure can, thank you, Jim.
Excellent, all right, so this evening I am here speaking to the council on Town Council Item 2022-034, Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Overlay District Amendment. Before we get into the amendment itself, just a brief background of how we got here. The initiation started with pending litigation regarding the permitting process for ground- The initiation started with pending litigation regarding the permitting process for ground-mounted solar here in the town of Barnstable. Litigation pending specifically was in relation to 810 Wakeby Road. During litigation, parties agreed that the town would seek to update their solar ordinance to expand the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district to include the address previously mentioned, and to adopt special permit criteria to go along with that potential expansion of the district. Through that, in cooperation with the Town Attorney's Office and the Planning and Development Office, a potential amendment to the district and a special permit criteria was provided to Town Council for first read back in October 7 of 2021. It was then handed off in accordance with Mass. General Law 48 to the Planning Board to open up a hearing to provide an update and a public hearing for potential amendments. As you'll see on the slide, it was opened on November 8 and was continued several times while the Planning Board worked through potential expanded amendments to this ordinance. They worked with staff to look at best practices across the country, and in some cases internationally, and looked to strengthen the criteria in which any permit for solar would move forward here in town. The Planning Board ultimately came to unanimous recommendation on March 14, 2022, and is what I will walk through tonight. So, the overlay district amendment recommends two distinct things. So, we're talking about location of the district and process. Location being adding to our existing overlay district, the address known as 810 Wakeby, which actually consists of three properties there. And then process, which requires an enhanced project review standard for our existing ordinance, which currently, as it stands today, our overlay district is through site plan review, which is administrative, and adds special permit criteria for those with a residential district located in the overlay district. So, the underlying zoning that is residential, and I'll go a little more into that in a moment here. So, our existing ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district has, this is our map of our existing overlay. Again, I'll go into a little bit more detail shortly, but to the right of your screen is what's the underlying zoning is industrial and limited industrial, and that is what we know as mostly the airport and our industrial area of town. To the left of your screen, the blue dash area is technically residentially zoned under for the underlying zoning. However, as you'll see, most of that is the transfer station and a few lots nearby. What we are discussing tonight as one of the items, the location, is to, if you can see over to the left, it's a little bit smaller in scale, is 810 Wakeby. It's actually at the point where essentially where Sandwich, Mashpee, and Barnstable come together. So, that is talking about an additional, an addition to the overlay district itself. Now, this is aerial, just again to the approximate boundaries of the large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district in the industrial area. Again, we're talking about the airport and much of the industrial built-out area. This one is again, which was to the left of our screen, which is the transfer station and some nearby parcels of land, and as you can see, it's somewhat surrounded by the residents there. This one would, in discussions about expanding, we're talking about 810 Wakeby, and so this is the essentially the approximate outline of where 810 Wakeby, again, looking at this location, and you'll see some wooded area and residents nearby. So, beyond just the location, there is aspects to the ordinance itself that the Planning Board sought to further expand. And so, first off, the Board's recommendation was further expanding in our definitions category of our existing ordinance, of which we expanded the "as-of-right" definition by including an exception, an exception that a special permit would be required when located in that residential underlying zoning district. So, as I mentioned before, we have the industrial area, which would not be subject to a special permit, but then we have currently, as it stands today, a residentially zoned district, which is that transfer station area, which would be subject to a special permit if this was to move forward. And of course, if the council did decide to expand to 810 Wakeby, it would also be subject to a special permit. In addition, just for best practices, the Planning Board recommended additional definitions to be added, some of which includes batteries, battery energy storage systems, and hazardous products. In terms of criteria, the Planning Board didn't just add, recommend adding special permit criteria, but also enhance criteria for our administrative site plan review as well. One key thing to bring forward to your attention is, in a lot of robust discussions about this, this potential recommended ordinance, the Planning Board decided to recommend to prohibit batteries and battery energy storage systems across the board. So, in terms of site plan and special permit, the battery storage would be prohibited if this recommendation was to move forward. The Planning Board also recommended certain site plan requirements to be added, again, for good practices, adding more language to hazardous materials required, stormwater management, and access control. It did also, after, I would say, a lot of really good public comment and feedback, enhance the setbacks and screening requirements that are existing today in our ordinance to protect the surrounding communities that may be near these potentially proposed sites. And then we get into the special permit criteria. So, as the ordinance stands today, there is not a special permit criteria, and so the Planning Board recommends adding this new level permitting. A keynote of a special permit is that it is, it is a public hearing, it is required to have a public hearing, and so this allows for a lot of public engagement, feedback, and as we found while reviewing this ordinance and expanding this ordinance, that public feedback is vital, and I think a special permit would assist in going a long way in protecting the health, safety, welfare of the community. Some criteria that was also expanded upon for not just site plan, but for special permit, is some of the similar aspects as you see in a site plan, so setback requirements, screening criteria, federal aviation administrative approvals, hazardous materials requirements, and here with the special permit, we then go above and beyond with an expanded operation and maintenance plan, and some other compliance criteria that if a planning board finds it's necessary to protect the health, safety, welfare, you have that opportunity in a special permit as it's discretionary. Examples, I know there's a lot of words, you don't have to read it all, but just some quick examples of what was added here for the site plan criteria. The project, this really discusses hazardous materials and the requirements that any applicant would be required to submit to the Planning Board to prove, excuse me, to site plan to prove that there are no hazardous materials, and if there are some are hazardous materials of small quantities, that those must be disclosed. In addition, we also, or the Planning Board recommends the applicant required that all manufacturers attest and certify that all solar panels, solar sheets, batteries, and all other materials used on the proposed site shall not contain PFAS. I think that's very, that's a very prominent issue in the area, and I think that's a wise inclusion in this. It also, as I mentioned earlier, expanded the setbacks. So, what the Planning Board has recommended is actually a minimum of 150-foot setback to all residentially developed lots, and 100-foot for setback for all of the properties. Again, a lot of language, so you don't have to read it, but just quickly, in terms of examples for a special permit criteria, we're talking about containment. As, you know, we sit on sole-source aquifer, so any hazardous materials, one of the big questions and concerns for the Planning Board certainly was what happens if hazardous materials were to get out, and so a discussion of proper containment must be provided for the site, and an expanded operation and maintenance plan is provided for continued maintenance of that site, as well as a commissioning plan, which works with our local officials to make sure that they are well aware of the intricacies of the site and know how to respond if there's any emergency. I also have the full ordinance for your vetting and review. Happy to go over that in more detail, or happy to take any questions at this time?
Okay, thank you for that rationale. Just to, for the sake of the public that's been patiently waiting, the public hearing is open. Do we have any public comments, Sarah?
Yes, we do. First up for a public comment is Rob Wilson. Rob, you can unmute, and you have, it's your chance to speak.
Okay, thank you. I didn't really expect to be first, but okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Generally, I'm in favor of solar, especially with the fact that, you know, gas is like $5 a gallon, hitting that way very quickly, and I just want to be sure that, you know, it's developed properly, but I still don't want to shortchange us by not looking at the long term. So, I just want to be speaking in favor of the project in general. And I guess the, I guess the ordinances don't seem unreasonable to me. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
Next is Anne Salas. Anne, go ahead.
Thank you. In the last 24 hours, I've spoken with 17 homeowners, all of the abutters to 810 Wakeby and Barnstable, and those within 300 feet. Each of them is against the solar overlay for 810 and are horrified at the prospect. Taxpayers and voters who bought their homes, certain of their investments, their safety in a residential zone, and the laws that should protect them. Those certainties have been threatened for the past three years by a proposal that would make TJA Clean Energy, Christopher Keys, the so-called owner of 810 Wakeby, and Eversource millions of dollars. This exactly defined spot zoning, illustrates the injustice of spot zoning, the benefit of a few to the detriment of many, and is the very purpose for the laws prohibiting it. It's a clear violation of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 4, Uniform Districts. Any zoning ordinance or bylaw which divides cities and towns into districts shall be uniform within the district for each class or kind of structures or uses permitted. The moratorium, well, this is regarding the moratorium and everything. The moratorium was intended to allow the town to consider the ramifications of industrial-scale solar installations, or ISI, on residentially zoned land, to allow time for our bylaws to be written with fullest awareness of the dangers. The town needs time for an environmental impact study of the effects of tons of hazardous materials in 15,000 solar panels entering our water system. Panels break apart by storm, system malfunction, fire and explosion, and of course, that decommissioning, releasing toxins into the groundwater. Inevitably, our drinking water will be contaminated with lethal forms of cadmium, copper, lead, arsenic, antimony, hexachlorothane, silicon tetrachloride, to name a few, and solar panels release nitrogen trifluoride, chemical compound 17,000 times worse than carbon dioxide. Residentially zoned 810 Wakeby has been illegally mined for soil and gravel, right down to a few feet above the water table, making it especially vulnerable. Town needs time to consider ways to mitigate the effects of glyphosate that Eversource will spray. Monsanto Bear paid billions of dollars to families victims of glyphosate exposure. One drop of glyphosate in two Olympic-sized pools causes cancer cells to grow in vitro. It remains in the ecosystem for 22 years. That spray will drift over our children, our homes, belongings, the gardens from which we eat, and into our sole-source aquifer. The reference that Jim made to the land to the west of the site, 810 Wakeby, is 37 acres of protected land, the zone of contribution to the Hayden Well Field, primary drinking water supply for 30,000 residents of this three-village district. It was recently designated a conservation restriction wellhead-protected land. Just last year in Chicago, sorry, a 2-megawatt, 2-megawatt battery explosion in Arizona last year resulted in a 75-foot lateral fireball that blew hazardous materials experts 75 feet through a commercial-grade chain-link fence. The 810 proposal is a 5-megawatt project, and that BEST battery-energy storage system would be 100 feet from a home with three small children. I met so many babies in the last 24 hours, all abutting this property. An explosion of that magnitude would ignite nearby 15,000 solar panels, and it would prevent first responders from accessing the one very narrow entry and egress of 810. Just last year in Chicago, a fire of solar panels and batteries in storage in a brick building burned for four days. They knew not to use water or chemical foams which exacerbate and fuel these types of fires. They hoped it would burn itself out. More than 5,000 people were evacuated. Thick, toxic soot, smoke, and fumes covered the area for days. Eventually, 28 tons of cement were poured onto the fire to extinguish it. It was the only thing they could think of to do. The experts at the National Fire Prevention Association say the safety technology just doesn't exist. Their NFPA 855, a 67-page standards of safety installation and maintenance for ISI and BEST, that's industrial-scale solar installations, does not have adequate emergency information because the technology doesn't exist, and the NFPA is 855, is the last word in resources for our fire departments across the country. The heat and soot of these fires and thermal runaway destroy gas, heat, and smoke detectors within battery containment structures. Oxford University engineers and physicists who studied the Arizona fire found the batteries are actually manufactured with faults that lead to thermal runaway, fires, and explosions. Industrial-scale solar development should never be allowed in residential zones. The town needs time to write the strongest possible solar amendments that make provisions for all these dangers, because they are real. They have happened, and they could happen right next to our homes. Provision for fire departments, ongoing finance, and training in the highly specialized resources needed for those dangers. We need to make solar developers and Eversource financially responsible in perpetuity for the life of the panels and decommissioning. Solar developers need to be made financially responsible for damages to our health, homes, and properties in perpetuity for the life of the ISI. This needs to be written into our bylaws to the maximum degree, every contingency covered. The town needs time to consider and plan for all of these factors.
Ms. Salas? Okay, I'm just trying to give you as much leeway as possible, but if you could, thank you.
I just have one point to make.
That's fine, go ahead.
Okay. An act that would sacrifice our homes, health, safety, and welfare for what TJA's attorney calls "a sacrifice for the greater good." An ISI, they say, would provide only 600 people with electricity. And ISSI, they say would provide only 600 people with electricity. With property values affected at least a mile away, at least four times that many people will lose the value of their homes. There's no need for an ISSI in residential zones while hundreds of acres of industrially zoned town owned land. Contiguous with the existing solar overlay. In Hyannis. Could produce 250,000 lease and tax revenue annually for the town of Barnstable for a 21 acre site. The size of eight 10 Wakeby. And that's really the the greater good.
Okay, can I ask you to stop there if I could?
I am stopped, it's it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
I know you've done a lot of research. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Salas, is Nancy still with you?
Oh, no, she left several hours ago.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Oh, but she did. She did charge me with reading her if I maybe seated her three minutes.
I'll entertain it. If you can make it three minutes because I gotta take a vote to go past 11 o'clock, so. You got three minutes.
It'll take less than that.
Excellent.
She says, I'm urging the council once again to reject the pose, to reject the proposed zoning change to allow an industrial scale solar array. At eight 10 Wakeby Road, it constitutes spot zoning and there's no reason to change it for this parcel of land. It sets a dangerous precedent threatening the health, welfare and safety, not only for abutters to eight 10. But the entire town because it sets a dangerous precedent. While I'm grateful for the work the planning board administration has done in regards to solar regulation. Residentially zoned areas should never be considered for this use. The town would see a far greater benefit by using land it already owns and is already zoned for industrial use. Everyone in Barnstable could benefit instead of a small group. The landowner, TJ seller, ever source and a few hundred of their customers. Population of Barnstable almost 50,000, 20,000 individual households. There really is no justification for this change, especially in light of the housing shortage and threats to our water supply. Why would you put solar panels where you could have much needed housing?
What's Nancy's last name?
Minnigerode. M I N N. E G E R O D E.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Any other public comment?
Attorney Ford is also here for public comment.
Okay.
Excuse me, I move that we go beyond 11 o'clock.
Thank you. Give a second?
Nobody wants to go.
Vice President Shep's next second.
I was muted, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I saw your hand up. Can we do a vote, please?
Yes. Counselors, Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Ralph Crisetti.
Yes.
Ebert. Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Absless.
Yes.
All of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Ford, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Having just heard those. Eleven perhaps not quite enthusiastic yeses, I'll be as brief as I can given the hour.
Sure.
I'm here on behalf of TGA Clean Energy LLC. I want to make it clear, I am not their litigation counsel. I do represent them for the purposes of the amendment that is posing before the council, the amendment to the ordinance. Which Jim described in some detail. I want to just mention that this matter goes back prior to the chronology that Jim started with in October. He indicated that. The amendment process was a result of the litigation. Actually, an amendment was brought to change the zoning and amend the map. Two and a half years ago. And the council sent it to the planning board. And the planning board on a four to three vote. Did not recommend it to the council and it was withdrawn at the request of TGA. And we heard two strong things during that process. One was. It should be a special permit process and not an as of right in this particular area. So as to give due process to those that lived in the area. And secondly, there was concern about battery storage. The planning board back then even expressed some doubts. That the technology was perfected to the point where it could be done safely. So fast forward to tonight. The special permit process is not only included in this ordinance. But it has been expanded. And a great deal of criteria has been added. To address the three things that chapter 40A, section three says a town should look at. Public health, safety and welfare when considering. Granting a solar array. But rather than do it in just those general terms, the planning board really drilled down. Your staff worked extremely hard. And unlike the litigation, which by its very nature is an adversary proceeding. This legislative process has been a cooperative proceeding. And my clients have participated in a positive sense and provided a great deal of information to the staff. And the bylaw, proposed bylaw at this point to the ordinance. Is in fact one that I'm here to tell you that TGA is very much in support of. And if the council sees fit to. Expeditiously act on the bylaw. That my clients are ready to take full advantage of it and proceed through the special permit process to see. If a proposal can meet the criteria that's laid out in the bylaw. I heard the comments of the previous speakers. I understand their concerns. But I think that most of the issues that they referred to. Deal with battery storage, which is not recommended in this ordinance. As Jim indicated in his overall presentation. It's specifically prohibited in the amendment that's before you. So I would encourage you to. Act expeditiously on the bylaw and act favorably. I think this is a great site for solar, given its history. And given the fact that the bylaw also provides that in the event a special permit is granted for solar on this site. That all prior permits to conduct any other type of nonconforming activity. Have to be terminated. And frankly, that's been the source of of. Much angst for the neighborhood on this site for many, many years. So I think it's a way to solve that issue as well. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. President, I should say, sorry, the hour is late. I thank you for the opportunity to to make these comments on behalf of TGA.
Okay, thank you very much. And just the ones have already made public comment and I tried to give you as much time as possible. It's not a back and forth necessarily, so. And I definitely give you some extended time, so I just want to give everybody their their opportunity. And now I want to give counselors an opportunity to have discussion unless there's more public comment, Sarah.
No, that's all we have for public comment.
Sorry, hi, one more.
I'm sorry, I forgot about the McDonough family.
I'm glad you made it. No, it's okay.
No problem. Hi, McDonough family.
Hi, I'm Catherine McDonough, also speaking for Christine and James McDonough. They unfortunately could not stay up this late. 111 Mockingbird Lane, Director Butters, good evening. I'm sure you are all aware of the decades of history concerning this property, a legal and literal headache that's been around almost as long as I have. For several years, we abutters have made our standpoints known to the planning board and are grateful for all their hard work. We were able to breathe a little more easily after hearing the board speak about how this decision would set a precedent for other large scale solar projects in our town. And how sincerely its members wanted it to be done patiently and carefully. Since there are countless ongoing developments concerning solar technology and its negative implications. Not only on our local flora and fauna, but also on our residents. It was extremely concerning to hear Attorney Ford stress the importance of making a rezoning decision as quickly as possible because this deal was time sensitive. We are here to find out whether you will recommend to spot zone this residential area not to strike a deal with TGA solar. We're not against solar. The more this process ensues, the more it feels as though this may not be about the common good as much as a specific solar company that claims to have our own interests at heart. However, this corporation is not green for the good of our planet. It is green for a profit. The carrots that have been dangled before us, the cleaning up of toxic waste that does not exist. And the ending of a salvage yard that the town has been remiss in its oversight to shut down. As the permits are no longer valid since it was written in the original special permit. That the use was only to be allowed while its petitioners, who are both long passed, were alive. These carrots have turned into red herrings and now seem misleading and not altruistic in the slightest. This rezoning decision should not be made with the benefits of solar revenue in mind. We are dealing with a company that has not only sued our town in an attempt to strong arm a premature decision. But also sued individual members of a planning board in Bridgewater, a case that was rightfully dismissed with prejudice. If solar is to be in our future, it should be for the correct reasons, like being the best course of action for our residents. Like being placed so as to be benign to our local wildlife, such as the deer and turkey that visit our backyards. Who have been displaced for decades due to the illegal use of this land. And may not be able to navigate the so-called wildlife friendly fences. And I thank Councilman Starr for bringing that up at a previous planning board meeting. Reasons like this being advantageous for the land itself. That has been needlessly clear cut time and time again by an owner without regard. Who has wasted our town's trees, time and taxes in the last quarter century. However, from where we abutters are sitting, it is our perspective that solar is not the best use of this property. And evident that the reasons for rezoning revolve around creating a convenient revenue stream. That will benefit everyone except those closest to it. Thank you sincerely for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, Anne, I'm actually, the proper etiquette actually is is once you've made your comment, is to actually sign off. But I'm going to allow you to stay in the room because I know you've been waiting for so long and I don't expect you to go back on channel 18. But at this point in time, I'm going to ask you to mute your microphone and I'm going to ask for council discussion. Thank you. Council discussion, anybody want to make a comment? Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Pres, Pres Beck. And I thank everyone for their comments. I especially find found a value for not only me, but I believe for the public. The presentation that Mr. Kupfer made. And I was wondering if that PowerPoint presentation can be available. On the town council's website as well as the planning, planning and developments website. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Vice President Shep, did you have a hand up?
I was going to ask a question of Attorney Ford. So, yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Go for it. The floor is yours.
I know that the planning board had an opportunity to visit the site and given the significant concerns. Made by the abutters about this particular development. Would you make or would the company or whomever make available an opportunity? For members of the town council to visit this site?
May I, Mr. President, respond?
Of course.
I will have to speak with my clients and and I will promptly and and get back to you. Through proper channels to the council, but it will be my strong recommendation that that. Opportunity be made available to any counselor who wants to come on to the site. I think that can get arranged.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Shep. Any other council comments, questions? Council Star, please.
But I know that the changes the planning board made are pretty extensive. It's 14 pages long. So I think we need more time to go through it. And ask questions as we go through at some point. I don't know. I don't think we have time tonight to do that. So maybe we should move this on to a future. Meeting, but my my other concern is that. As some of the public was saying that there's no benefit to the town. And you know, and I, and my thought is if you think about inclusionary zoning. Where if someone's going to build a 272 apartment apartment building. We ask them to put in 10% affordable housing. There's no, there's no mitigation here for either the fire department. There's no mitigation for maybe. Some community solar, like 10% community solars that local people could benefit from this electricity. And there's, you know, and there's, there just seems to be no benefit for the town. So I was hoping maybe something like that could be discussed at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Star. Just want to give all councils an opportunity to give feedback, ask a question. Any other counselor input? Council Cullen, please.
Yes, to make a motion to continue this, keep the public hearing open and continue this item to the August meeting, please.
Second.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and that would be August 18th.
Okay.
To be specific.
That way we have more time to delve in and go visit the site and see what's going on.
Karen, do you need that specific motion to be made with the date certain?
Yes, yes, it should be made with the date.
I move that we keep the public hearing open and move this item to August 18th.
Item 2022034.
Yes.
Second.
We have a first and a second. So we're continuing this item with and keeping a public hearing, the public hearing is still open. So.
You're continuing the public hearing to that date.
That is correct. So with that, can I do a vote, please?
Counselors, Cullen.
Yes.
Ralph Crisetti.
Yes.
Ebert. Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Absless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
That's 12 yes, thank you.
Thank you. So that has been moved. Counselor Shep, you can continue, please. Item number 2022-134.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is another item of old business. Item number requiring a public hearing and a roll call. Vote of two thirds of the full council. Item 2022-134. Order pursuant to MGL chapter 40A, section five submitted to the planning board, a proposed zoning amendment establishing a temporary moratorium. On the construction of a large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic systems as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Public hearing is open and rationale, please.
Good evening, Senior Planner, Planning and Development. Just real quick, I'll provide a brief rationale on this petition item. Town Council 2022-134 temporary moratorium on the construction. Of large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic systems. In accordance with section five of Mass General Law 40A, the State Zoning Act. The act provides that adoption or change of the zoning ordinance or bylaw may be initiated by the submission. To the city council by 10 registered voters. On February 3rd, 2022, a resident of the town submitted a proposed amendment to the town zoning ordinance. To the town clerk along with the signatures of 10 residents of the town to comply with this this act. On February 7th, 2022, the town clerk certified that the petition was signed by 10 certified voters of the town. On February 9th, the petition was then submitted to town council by one of the proponents of this petition. The proposed amendment was then placed on the town council's February 17th, 2022 meeting agenda and referred to the planning board. The planning board, after proper public notice, held a public hearing on March 28th, 2022. And after after hearing from the petitioner and after further discussion, closed that hearing. The planning board ultimately voted unanimously not to recommend adoption of the proposed moratorium. In coming to that decision, the board reviewed and considered heavily the analysis completed by our assistant attorney, town attorney Kate Conley. Ms. Conley, and I believe that that memorandum has been provided to council and is on our website. Ms. Conley states concerns over the timeframe of the moratorium, which may be understood as open ended. The definitions of the of the solar array and its enforcement of said definitions. Among some other concerns, our assistant town attorney. Our Assistant Town Attorney cites several cases to support the argument that the moratorium as drafted should not be recommended at this time. With that being said, I do believe Ms. Alice is still present and may wish to provide rationale, rationale for this petition.
I read my rationale earlier, but I do have this to add. And that it's a recommendation that the legal department investigate whether, including a prohibition on battery energy storage systems in all zones, will hold up to a legal challenge. It's something that FEMA calls the probable event of fire and explosion due to inherent system malfunction. The Department of Energy Resources requires best at industrial-scale solar installations like this one. If battery prohibition in all zones is challenged legally after we allow ISI in residential zones, we will end up with batteries 75 feet from our children and homes. Planning and legal departments work very hard to prevent that scenario. It's very concerning to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Alice. Sarah, is there any other public comment?
No, there's, Mr. Wilson, did you want to speak on this item?
Yep, I do. Thanks. Yeah, as I said, I genuinely say a favor of solar and what I wanted to say previously was that I had been a neighbor-abutter to the previous solar array that was put into Barnstable and I moved because the existing activity on the land was still going on, which was detrimental to my property, but I couldn't do anything about it, I guess. So, so I moved. So I would rather have a solar plant next to me than, than, than what was previously there. So my other comment is, there's a lot of concern about batteries and solar panels, but there's a lot of people with solar panels on the roofs. There's a lot of people putting batteries in their houses. And that's a lot closer to people than, it's in their house actually, rather than apart from it. So granted, the town can't do anything about personal, but there's, I guess, these problems that are existing in everybody's house that's kind of put in solar and battery. So that's, it's a, it's a risk. I, like I say, I'm in favor of solar energy. I think we need to pursue it. And I think we should continue with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Did the McDonald family want to speak on the subject? Okay, not hearing anything. Any other public comments, Sarah?
I believe that is it.
Okay, thank you. A council discussion. Any council feedback in regards to this item?
If I may, Mr. President, through you to some of the previous speakers, may I address a little bit further what Senior Planner Jim Kupfer mentioned in terms of my legal opinion?
Absolutely.
If I may keep it brief, thank you. Kate Conley, Assistant Town Attorney, I reviewed the citizen's petition for this moratorium on solar and implicit in it is two questions. One, does the town have the authority to adopt such a moratorium ordinance? And secondly, is this petition legal? With respect to the first question, municipalities do have home rule powers under an amendment to the Constitution, which allow us to adopt more stringent ordinances, provided they're not inconsistent with state law. However, a municipality does not have the authority to simply impose development moratorium for an unlimited amount of time or without a basis for things that need to be studied, such as battery storage, which has been mentioned, other health, safety, and other impacts. Courts have held that a municipality may impose a reasonable time limitation on development where those restrictions are temporary and adopted to provide controlled development while the municipality engages in comprehensive planning studies. So it's not just a moratorium so that we can postpone things indefinitely. It's while we do some actual work. In addition, it's instructive to note that while the Attorney General doesn't have to review ordinances for city forms of government, but they do review them for towns. So it's kind of instructive to note some of the things that the Attorney General has found are invalid in town bylaws. And that helps us in terms of worrying about whether we're going to have an ordinance get challenged and lose in court. Essentially, there were two things in this proposed ordinance. One was some language that said, and these are two things that I think would not withstand legal challenge. One was language that said that no building permit, special permit or site plan approval may be issued in connection to or for the construction of any large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system in size of more than 150% of the documented average use of a residential, commercial, and so on. The words 150% of the documented average use are somewhat incomprehensible. The legal term for that is void for vagueness. That provision would not withstand legal challenge. The other problem with this citizen's petition as written is that it's completely open-ended. And as the case law and the Attorney General has said, you've got to have a specific time. You cannot just have an undefined limit. What they say is a moratorium for 11 and a half months or until sufficient deliberations by the town have been completed. So that, that's not an end term. Therefore, we recommended that the planning board discuss what the basis for a moratorium might be, what sort of studies might need to be conducted that would be helpful for the town moving forward, and then come up with a specific time period that would be included in such a moratorium. So our recommendation was not to pass this or to adopt this particular moratorium as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Council Clark?
Thank you very much, President Vivek. Thank you very much, Attorney Conley. So are you, would you recommend that we then send your recommendation back to the planning board to refine the, the issues that you have brought to our attention?
That's a discretionary determination by the planning board. I'm only recommending at this time that this citizen's petition as written not be adopted.
Thank you.
Vice President Schnepp.
Thank you, Mr. President. To follow up on that argument, could the petition, if, if the council voted to not approve a temporary moratorium, the petitioners could come back with something that might actually be permitted or would not be legally challenged?
They could come back with something else.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't the two-year rule go into effect? I'm sorry, yes. If they came back with, well, if they came back with something substantially different and the planning board approved that, then the two years, they wouldn't be precluded from coming back within two years. But the planning board would have to vote that it was acceptable for it to come back because there's something, you know, substantially different.
Okay, thank you.
Council Cullen.
Well, substantially different would be not an open-ended deal, right? I mean, it's pretty easy to figure out what, what would make it substantially different. If they put a timeline on it, and I'm just trying to give some guidance. Right, those are the two things, the specific things that would be studied. The specific public safety, health concerns, anything else, the more specific it can be, the better. And then a definite timeline that's reasonable to accomplish those studies. Right, so that would make it substantially different for Ms. Alice. She wanted to come back with a, with a petition that might be favorably considered. Right, again, it's a discretionary decision of the planning board whether to recommend that be brought back. Right. Those would be a good start to make those. Those are the, the legal issues with the, the item now that you see.
Correct, yes.
Thank you very much.
Council Star.
Thank you. Tell, tell me if I'm right with this, but the planning board was also, is also allowed to write their own moratorium. And we could, if we feel that there's still questions and room for study, we could set a time and say, we want to take six-month break and look into some, you know, some planning aspect of this. That, that if people are concerned enough about some aspect, we could, that's, that's within our purview, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct. It doesn't obviously have to be a citizen petition.
Right, okay, thank you.
Council Cullen.
I'd like to move this item to a vote.
So move to question?
Yes.
Again. So we're voting to move the question.
Correct.
Sorry. I'm trying to be seamless, but it's really late.
And, and given the late hour, could we have a clarification on what a yes vote is and a no vote is?
Thank you.
Turning over.
A yes vote is you will take a vote on the merits. You will take a subsequent vote after the vote to move the question.
We're moving the question.
We're just, oh, your vote, oh, sorry. Okay, we're just moving the question right now.
We're moving the question to actually vote on the item.
Correct.
I'm sorry, long way around.
All right.
So.
We're doing it in person.
Right, I mean, super fast.
Okay, and going to the vote, please.
Counselors, Ralph Crisetti.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Vivek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Chauncey.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atlas.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
That's 12 yes. Thank you.
Okay, so now we've unanimously voted to vote on this item. So now we will vote on this item. Vice President Schnepp.
This is where I want the clarification on a yes vote versus a no vote.
Yes, oh, go ahead. Turning over.
I'm taking a look, actually, now that I understand what you're asking.
Thank you. I don't know what that means.
Okay. So actually, sorry. The way it's written is that you're submitting it to the planning board for review, which obviously already happened. Can we take a two-second break on this? I'd like to talk to my folks.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm glad I asked.
Thank you.
So are we. Counsel President, when you're ready, please. Sure. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. We just got to, do you want me to go back online or do you want to?
No, we need to go back into the meeting.
Right. Yes, so Sarah.
Yep, you're all set.
Okay, thank you. I do would like to, Council Clark, Council Neary, thank you. Okay, we're back and turning it over to Attorney Nova, please.
Actually, Charlie, were you speaking?
Yes, I, I will jump in if I may, Mr. President. The, the language of the vote that is in front of you probably, now probably needs to be amended because it was essentially to refer the matter over to the planning board for recommendation and that has occurred. We're recommending that the, that the council entertain a motion to, and we're going to put this in the affirmative, just for the purposes of putting it before the board, the council rather, that the council.
Amend, amend this order.
Amend the order to affirmatively adopt the.
The moratorium.
Moratorium, thank you, I'm sorry. The moratorium as printed. And someone can second that and then you can have a vote on that and again.
So it's, it's, Paul, you're looking confused. It's a more, it's a, it's a motion to amend the, the order to amend item 2022-134 to approve the moratorium as written. And then a yes vote would approve it and a no vote would not. But first you have to amend it. So first you do a motion to amend it. You take the vote on that and then you take a separate vote.
And then you, you vote on as amended.
As amended, correct. It's already gone to the planning board.
Right, correct. Vice President Schnepp, would you like to give that a shot?
Do you want me to say it again?
Yes, please.
Can we amend it since it's already been, we've moved the question, though?
Yeah, we've already moved the question.
And doesn't a no vote have the same effect if you're not going to refer to the planning board? It's not going to go anywhere.
Less clear.
Counselor Cullen could withdraw her motion to move.
Yeah, I was just going to say. Motion to move question 2022-134.
Do we have to vote on that, correct?
Second.
Yeah, let's vote on it.
So let's vote on that.
Can she withdraw it after it's been, it was voted, though, wasn't it? Or was it?
No, we just moved it.
Okay, all right, good. Yeah, let's withdraw.
If you withdraw your motion and the person who's seconded withdraws the second, it's no longer before the, the council.
Right. I, I didn't second it before, so.
Who, who seconded it before?
I, I'll withdraw the second.
Okay, yeah, you did. That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's vote on that.
So if someone would make a motion.
So now it's a motion to amend.
So now it's a motion to amend item two oh two two one three four. Don't you have to vote on?
I don't know, I don't think you're doing this right.
You have to vote on withdrawing the motion to move the question.
Thank you, Councilor Karsetti, I agree.
Okay.
So.
We're voting to withdraw the motion.
Technically, probably need to reconsider the vote to move the question.
We keep talking.
Counselors, Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Karsetti.
Yes.
Twelve yes, it's withdrawn.
Thank you. Now we can move with the amendment, correct, Council?
Yes.
So it would be a motion to amend item two oh two two one three four to approve the moratorium as written, or as submitted.
I'll move that.
Second. This is just a vote to amend it, you're not actually voting on the matter.
Yep. Voting to amend.
Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Yes, twelve yes, thank you.
Now.
The motion as amended.
Second.
The item as amended.
Yep.
So a yes vote would now approve the moratorium.
And a no vote would, would, um.
Would disapprove it.
Disapprove, correct.
And as a quantum vote, uh, were you moving to amend the ordinance, the zoning ordinance by adopting this, the two-thirds vote?
Okay, thank you.
Counselors. Mendez.
No.
Neri.
No.
Schnep.
No.
Shaughnessy.
No.
Starr.
No.
Stein Hilber.
No.
Axelus.
No.
Clark.
No.
Cullen.
No.
Rap Karsetti.
No.
Hebert.
No.
Levek.
No.
Twelve noes.
Good.
It is not approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Thank you, and thank you for the public for bearing with us as well. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to our next item of business, uh, Council Cullen, please, twenty twenty-two dash one five seven.
Yes, twenty, item twenty-five dash one five seven, appointments to a board committee near commission, shellfish commilit- committee, sorry. William Chappar- Cherepon, I'm sorry, as a member-at-large to a term expiring six twenty twenty-five. Steamship Authority Port Council, Roland Braille as Town of Barnstable representative member to a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three. This may be acted upon with a roll call majority.
Second.
The first and the second, any discussion? Not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Neri.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Now I will entertain a motion to refer agenda, agenda items twenty twenty-two dash one six zero through twenty twenty-two dash one eight three as written to individual public hearings to be held on each item at the town council meeting on June second, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
First and the second, and, um, we have our very dedicated Director of Finance, Mark Mill, to give us a short rationale, maybe.
Don't even, Mark.
President, good evening, Counselors. I know that due to the lateness of the hour, I will try to be brief. Um, I do have a presentation to share with you. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to provide you some of the highlights that are included in the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three operating budget, and which the public hearings will start, will begin at your next council meeting on June second. So including in that, included in that budget is the continuation of us maintaining a strong fond- financial foundation. We are enhancing services in several targeted areas, including communications, environmental, facility maintenance, implementing, continued implementation of our comprehensive wastewater management plan and our waterways. We also continue with the ongoing organizational restructuring to promote our operational efficiency and effectiveness, and we are increasing our investment in capital infrastructure. For strong finan- financial foundation, we continue to use conservative general fund revenue estimates for our local receipts. This allows for increased budget flexibility to respond to the changing economic conditions that may occur. This is evidenced by the recent pandemic and how well we fared through that pandemic financially. Um, we have healthy operating reserve levels still. We've created several stabilization funds to augment our capital program and address our unfunded employee benefit liabilities. And we have a comprehensive set of formalized financial policies and practices. There's an illustration of what I mean by conservative, uh, local receipt estimates. The blue bar represents the budget estimates that we're using for various local receipts in fiscal year twenty-three. You can see that those estimates are below what we actually took in in fiscal year twenty-one and what we're projecting to take in in fiscal year twenty-two. Again, it provides us a greater amount of budget flexibility going forward. Here's our general fund and enterprise fund reserve levels, last certified at about fifty-one million dollars collectively by the Department of Revenue. We used about one point five million as supplemental appropriations in the fiscal year twenty-two budget process. And we're using about sev- just over seven million for our fiscal year twenty-three operating and capital budgets, mostly in the capital budget. And leaving us with about forty-two million before we close this fiscal year, which will grow once we do close this fiscal year to do the positive financial operations that we currently recognize. Other town reserves that we have on the books, our first three here are uh, additional stabilization funds that we have to a- augment our capital program. The fourth one on the list here is the Water Stabilization Fund that we created to help, um, subsidize or, uh, mitigate our water rate increases that we see in our Water Supply Enterprise Fund. This was the, this is funded by the Host Community Agreement with Vineyard Wind, where we receive our first payment of six hundred and forty thousand dollars in about a week. We have three trust, uh, trust funds established to help address those unfunded employee benefit liabilities. We have a couple of, uh, education funds for a circuit breaker, uh, special education circuit breaker in the school tuition, school choice tuition fund to help, uh, offset some costs in our school department operations. And we have over three point six million dollars in a reserve for abatements and exemptions on property taxes. Service enhancements for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three include environmental. We are proposing an environmental sustainability and integration manager position in the town manager's office. We are moving our hazmat collection service townwide, so any resident in the town of Barnstable can participate in that program going forward. This was previously in our solid waste enterprise fund. You had to have a transfer station sticker to get in and participate in that program. That is now a townwide program, and we made it part of the general fund. We are providing additional funding for cyanobacteria monitoring and invasive weed control in our lakes and ponds, and we're providing more funding for water quality sampling and communications. In the area of facility maintenance, we are providing DPW with extra fu- additional funds to maintain the new fields in Osterville and MacBarren. And we have, um, additional custodial position as well as seasonal positions um, in public works to maintain our bathhouses to increase the level of service there. We also have a new part-time position at the Sandy Neck operations to maintain the facilities out in that park. In the area of communications, we're proposing the budget a new coordinator of municipal interpretive services. We also are incorporating a new text my gov communications application. In the areas of, in the area of waterways, we are proposing an assistant harbor master's position under the Marine Environmental Affairs Department, as well as a new assistant Sandy Neck Park Manager. And we're providing a rapid rescue and response vessel out at Sandy Neck. And we continue with the implementation of our comprehensive wastewater management plan with the additional staffing of nine more positions as the project design and implementation and construction are gonna be coming forward in the very near future. And some have already had with this past capital program. In the Community Services Department, we've restructured, we actually restructured this in the last quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. We took the opportunity of four key positions in this department, either retiring or resigning, and created a new Assistant Community Services Director. We replaced an HYCC Program Manager with an HYCC Manager. We replaced the Recreation Division Financial Supervisor with a Budget and Financial Manager position for the entire Community Services Department that will work with all divisions within the Community Services Department, not just the Recreation Division. And we eliminated an administrative mark, Assistant Marketing Coordinator position in our golf operations. And we moved the position to, the additional position to our Council on Aging Formula Grant. All of this was accomplished with, within the existing resources that we had in fiscal year twenty-two operating budget in the minimal, with a minimal additional cost to the fiscal year twenty-three operating budget with eighteen, approximately eighteen thousand dollars. Again, we've increased the in- investment in our capital program. Where, in addition to the normal two and a half percent increase in the transfer to our Capital Trust Fund, we're adding all new property tax growth, um, to the Capital Trust Fund, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're estimating for next year. So that, uh, growth in that transfer to the Capital Trust grows by over a million dollars with this twenty-three. We are doing an overhaul of the information technology systems within our police department. This includes all new laptops, PCs, uh, wireless access points throughout the facility, as well as our switching equipment and a backup system. This is one operation that runs, as you know, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and we have to have those systems up and running and reliable and secure for this operation. It is very old, and we, we need to do a refresh out there. We have over a million dollars included in the budget for vehicle and equipment replacement, and we have another two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for fac- facility systems and information technology refresh across all other departments. The school budget priorities for fiscal year twenty-three include providing students with increased intervention opportunities. This includes about twenty new positions in the school department, um, special education teachers, special education paraprofessionals, English language learner teachers, and an alternative education staff for the, at the Barnstable High School, and one technology science teacher at the elementary level. Here's some selected scoot student, school populations in the Barnstable Public School. As you can see in these categories, the enrollments in all of these categories continues to increase on an annual basis, um, requiring those additional intervention, uh, staff positions. Here's our chapter school, chapter seventy school funding budget trend for the past five years and fiscal, allowing us to make all these contribute for these additional investments in our general fund operating budget is a significant increase in our chapter seventy-eight. Our foundation budget, under the new Student Opportunity Act that was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, increases ten point four million dollars from sixty-five million to seventy-five million. It's a significant increase in the required spending in our public school system. To provide funding for that, the state is picking in additional money and results in a five and a half million dollar increase in our chapter seventy. They, the Student Opportunity Act includes a new definition for low incomes, uh, students, and Barnstable saw a significant increase in a percentage of a student's population that fell within that new definition, which contributed to that significant increase in aid. The state also in- increased the implementation timeframe for the Student Opportunity Act because they missed a year during the pandemic, and that resulted in almost a nine percent increase in funding uh, for the chapter seventy program. Both the governor's budget, the senate's budget, and the house budget have all included funding at this level for the chapter seventy program, pretty much guaranteeing Barnstable to receive that increase in chapter seventy-eight. Here are the school budget funding sources. The general fund, um, portion is seventy-six point seven million. In addition to that, it will use some of their circuit breaker funds, some of their school choice funds, and they have small amount of transportation fees, making up the, near the, almost eighty million dollars, funding the eighty million dollar budget for the school department next year. The general fund operation summary, we have a total increase of about five point three million dollars across all departments, or about a four point six percent increase. The largest dollar amount, of course, being the school department, as it is the largest department. And we have the Marine and Environmental Affairs as the largest percentage increase, and that's really attributable to the, uh, additional position, harbor, assistant harbor master position in that operation. Our general fund fixed costs are going up by about four million dollars, six percent. The largest increase, dollar increase, again, is that investment in the capital program, that transfer to the Capital Trust Fund. And we also are seeing a significant increase in our property and liability insurance. It is very difficult to find property, uh, or insurance underwriters to write insurance policies for communities on the Cape because of our location, and with all of the events that are occurring nationwide. Um, i- it is, is driven insurance, uh, policy costs up exponentially over the past few years, and we expect that continue, to continue, we're going through our renewal process now. The enterprise fund op- direct operating expenses, we see a significant increase in the airport. It's really attributable to the cost of jet fuel, but as you know, you turn around and we sell that, and it's a significant increase in revenue that we're projecting out there as well. And we actually have a couple of enterprise fund budgets declining, um, including the Sandy Neck operating budget and the solid waste budget, solid waste budget is going down, uh, actually because we're removing, um, the hazmat disposal costs out of that budget, I mean, moving it over into the general fund, and there's also a reduction in capital outlay there. Uh, someone, somebody asked why the, the stickers go up thirty dollars for its residential transfer station stickers if the budget's going down. And that's because we subsidize those rates with surplus in that enterprise fund. And we don't have the surplus anymore to continue to subsidize those rates to the same degree. Here's our projected tax levy for fiscal year twenty-three. It's projected to come to about one hundred and forty point five million dollars, which is about a four point two million dollar increase over the current tax levy, or three point one percent. Again, seven hundred and fifty thousand is projected for new growth, and we have a couple of additions to the tax levy, including the Cape Cod environmental tax and the Cape Cod regional technical high schools debt exclusion. The three point three million dollars is the base increase under proposition two and a half that we are allowed. And so that results in a hundred and forty point five million dollar projected tax levy. There's a, uh, graph that illustrates the direct operating expenses by department. We, what we commonly refer to as the big three, schools, police, public works comprised, um, total more than eighty percent, close to ninety percent of our direct operating budget expenditures. Uh, cost accounting exercise that we go through every year for illustrative purposes is to take that sixty million dollars of fixed costs and allocate it out to the various operating departments, and this is what the budget would look like if we budgeted this way. We don't budget this way. This is just a cost accounting exercise that we like to present every year. And total direct expenses plus fixed costs are about a hundred and ninety million dollars. And this is what it would look like if we were to budget this way. About fifty-eight percent would be the schools, twelve percent public works, eleven percent police. Still, a significant portion of the overall budget are the big three. There's the estimated property tax allocation. After we apply all the local receipts to the various operations, we're left with a hundred and forty million dollar tax levy, and this is approximately where those tax. And this is approximately where those tax dollars go. Sixty-two cents of every tax gal dollar goes to fund education, fourteen cents to police, eight cents to public works, and so forth. And this is all provided, how we arrived at these figures are provided in the operating budget summary we prepared and shared with you. It's the shorter fifty-three, fifty-four page document, um, and it's also available on our website. Finally, these are the projected tax rates for next fiscal year. This assumes a continuation of a twenty percent residential exemption and a continuation in residential property values. Property values for fiscal year twenty-three are going to be based on calendar year sales in fiscal year twenty-one. Still a very strong residential real estate market here on the Cape. So we anticipate residential property values to continue to climb, which will actually result in a decrease in the tax rate that we are projecting. However, since tax bill, tax levy is still going up a hundred to a hundred and forty million, or about four point two million dollars, there is a slight increase in the resident, projected residential median tax bill of less than a hundred dollars of, based on those projected tax rates and the continuation of a twenty percent residential exemption. That concludes my presentation, will be available for the next couple of weeks. If you have any questions on the operating budget, any area, please feel free to reach out and contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mellon. Could you, um, forward that to, um, Cindy Lovell so that she can forward that slide of presentation?
Absolutely.
So councilors could-
Be on the website tomorrow morning.
What's that?
Will be on the website tomorrow morning as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, so now that we have that rationale, um, obviously we're moving these items onto the next meeting, move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you very much. Um, Counselor Atsless, please, if you could, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one eight four.
All right, this is item number twenty, twenty-two dash one eight four, it's the first reading. Refer to second reading, June second, two thousand twenty-two. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three spending limitations, Senior Services Classroom Education Fund, one hundred thousand dollars. Recreation Program Fund, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Shelfers Propagation Fund, two hundred thousand dollars. Consumer Protection Fund, six hundred thousand dollars. Geographic Information Technology Fund, ten thousand dollars. Arts and Culture Program Fund, fifty thousand dollars. Asset Management Fund, five hundred thousand dollars, as written.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, refer to a second reading, next meeting, June second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. Counselor Rap Kersetti, please, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one eight six.
This is a new business, may be acted upon by roll call, majority vote, item twenty, twenty-two, one eight six, transfer order in the total amount of five hundred and twenty-two thousand from fiscal year twenty twenty-two, personnel budgets to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, operating expenditure and operating capital budgets for the purpose of funding outside professional services, equipment, supplies, and materials in several departments, and to the Barnstable Police Department, fiscal year twenty twenty-two personal, personnel budget, as written.
Second.
You have a first and a second. Director Mellon for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Lebec, Mark Nolan, Director of Finance. The general fund and municipal operations in the town of Barnstable are projected to collectively produce over nine hundred thousand dollars in salary budget savings due to numerous retirements and resignations throughout the fiscal year. The Gulf Enterprise Fund is projected to generate in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in salary savings as well. As a result, it presents an opportunity to utilize some of these funds to procure outside professional assistance, equipment, supplies, and materials that were not included in the original fiscal year twenty-two budget or the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget. In addition, due to several retirements and vacancies in the Barnstable Police Department throughout the year, minimum staffing requirements have resulted in the department incurring additional overtime costs to fill shifts, necessitating the need for a budget transfer to cover those costs. The transfer request will provide the following purchases and funding. Replace a boat engine on the, for the Marine Environmental Affairs Department. Conduct a vulnerability assessment within our information technology operations. Provide, purchase a text my gov communications tool for the Town Managers Department. Appraisals for the appellate tax board cases before the assessing operations. Inclusionary Affordable Housing Ordinance Review in the Planning Department. Downtown Hyannis Wayfinding for the Planning and Development Department. North Street Parking Lot Technical Assistance in the Planning and Development Department. A drone and the corresponding training and for the inspectional services staff. Surveillance cameras for the investigative services operations within the Police Department, the Police Department salaries, as well as replace the fire suppression system in the adult community center. Thank you.
Hey, Council discussion. All right, not seeing any, move into a vote, please.
Counselors, Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Cullen, please, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one eight seven.
Item twenty, twenty-two dash one eight seven, appointment to a board committee or commission amid Cape Cultural Center as Kathleen McMahon is a regular member, member to a term expiring six, twenty twenty-three. This is a first read, referred to a second reading on six, two, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Excellent, first and a second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. And Counselor Cullen, please, if you could, item twenty, twenty-two dash one eight eight.
Yes, I'd like to move twenty, twenty-two dash one eight eight, reappointments to a board committee or commission as written to our next regular meeting, which is June second, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Yeah, first and a second, move to a vote, please.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti. Oh, I'm sorry, um, Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one recuse.
Thank you. And in that spirit, I'm going to have recused myself from the next item. And in turn, I'm going to be handing over the gavel to, uh, Vice President Schnep for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of new business is item twenty, twenty-two dash one eighty-eight A. Counselor Cullen, could you please read?
Yes, item twenty, twenty-two dash one eight eight A, reappointment to a board committee or commission. Youth Commission Member Cameron Lebec. As a student member to a term expiring six, twenty twenty-three, this is a first read, referred to a second read on six, two, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a first and a second, uh, can we have the vote, please, Assistant Town Clerk?
Counselors, Clark.
I have a question. Did, um, Counselor Cullen just say expiring six, twenty, twenty-three?
She said twenty-two. Hmm.
That's what the, um-
Yeah, you're right.
Mendez says.
I have to read it.
Should I, um-
Is that a scriptener's error?
Should we amend that?
To a term, so, what's the, what's the problem with it?
It's a term expiring just this June. Is it supposed to be till next year?
Yeah.
Oh, well, not on the front sheet, it's not. On page six.
Yep.
I'm reading it, this is-
It's a scriptener's error.
It's a six twenty-three.
Yeah.
Page fifty has expiring six, twenty twenty-two.
So, yeah.
Okay.
It's a scriptener's error.
Yeah.
It's there. So, six twenty-three. Okay. I'll take the vote.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one recuse.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this next item.
Thank you, Counselor Stein Hilber. Counselor Cullen, please, item number twenty, twenty-two, one eight eight B.
Yes, this is item twenty, twenty-two dash one eight eight B, reappointment to a board committee or commission. Youth Commission Member Mary Stein Hilber is a student member to a term expiring six, twenty twenty-three. This is a first read, referring to a second reading on six, June twenty twenty-two.
Second.
We have a first and a second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one recuse.
Thank you. Um, next item of business, um, the Counselor Stein Hilber, please, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one eight nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, this item twenty, twenty-two dash one eight nine, like, refer to a second read on June second, twenty twenty-two. Order authorizing the award and execution of a lease with a term of five years for golf cars and utility vehicles at old Barnstable, Barnstable Fieldgrounds and Hyannis Golf Courses, as written.
Second.
This is the first review, a first and a second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Cut.
Schnep.
Oh, yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hebert, please, next item, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one nine zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number twenty, twenty-two, one nine zero, is the first reading, refer to a second reading on June second, twenty twenty-two. Approval of a change of purpose to allow the grant of an easement to Park City Wind LLC in certain parcels of land, namely that portion of Craigville Beach known as Assessor's Parcel two oh six dash zero one three, and that portion of Twenty South Main Street known as Assessor's Parcel two two eight dash one three eight.
Second.
A first and a second, referring to a second reading in June second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy, please, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one nine one.
May I just ask a question?
Sure.
Why can't we do all these at once like we did previous ones?
Hmm.
Um.
Just curious. What's the difference?
It's, um, I don't know, it has state ramifications. I think it's pros, it's great, it's to just read them all, you know, it's real quick. It's just a second read, you know what I mean? So.
Okay. Just curious. I'm a new guy.
You sure?
So this is item number twenty, twenty-two dash one nine one. Order to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth to enact special legislation approving the grant of easement to Park City Wind LLC in certain parcels of land, namely that portion of Craigville Beach. Am I reading the wrong item?
Nope.
Okay, Craigville Beach known as Assessor's Parcel two oh six dash one, zero one three, and that portion of South Main Street, Twenty South Main Street, known as Assessor's Parcel two two eight dash one three eight. This is a first read of new business, referring to a second reading on six, two, twenty twenty-two, as written.
Thank you.
Second.
Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And while we, um, you're on my mind, Counselor Atsless, please, twenty, twenty-two dash one nine two.
Thank you for the privilege. This is item number twenty, twenty-two dash one nine two. Order to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth to enact special legislation approving the grant of easement to Park City Wind LLC in certain parcels of land, namely the portion of Craigville Beach known as Assessor's Parcel two zero six dash zero one three, and that portion of Twenty South Main Street known as Assessor's Parcel twen, two twenty-eight dash one three eight. This is the first reading, refer to second reading on June second, two thousand and twenty-two, as written.
Second.
A first and a second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neary, please, item number twenty, twenty-two dash one nine three.
My pleasure, Mr. President. It's new business, it's a first reading. Referring to a second reading, June sixth, sorry, June second, two thousand and two. It's item number tw, two, zero, twenty-two dash one ninety-three. It's an order to grant to Park City Wind LLC an easement from Craigville Beach to Shoot Flying Hill Road for utility purposes only, as written.
Second.
A first and a second, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes. Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, please. Item number twenty-two, twenty-two dash one nine four.
Thank you very much, President Lebec. Agenda item twenty-two dash one nine four. This is new business, a first reading to be referred to a second reading on June second, twenty-twenty-two. Authorization for Park City Wind LLC to record chapter ninety-one license and other licenses and approvals issued to Park City Wind.
Second.
First and a second. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.